Council members McCarthy, Campbell, Coffey, Williams, Mary Davis, Folks, Guffman, Byron, Jackson, Maddox, Smith, Pitts, Banks, Valentine, Asher, Myrtle Davis, Finley, Arrington.
President. Okay, I've seen Mrs. Valentine's coat and her bag, and I saw two other council members. Do we know, Madam Clerk, where Mrs. Valentine is? And have we received telephone calls from other council members?
(inaudible)
Yeah, here Mr. Williams, here Mrs. Valentine come, would that make a quorum? And I understand that Mr. Guffman is upstairs.
If you count Mr. Guffman, that would be nine.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Okay.
No, we're still gonna have a quorum yet.
Barbara, would you please go upstairs and see if other council members are telling we need them to get started, please? Have we seen Mr. Campbell? Morris just indicated to me that he talked to several people, and they were on the impression that we started at 1:30. But let's see what we have, because we need to get started and resolve it and get a little move forward with the people business. Would all council members please take your seat? Would all council members please take your seat? Jim, you and, uh... Okay, we are invite full participation from the media, but we got to get the meeting Please retake, um, a roll count, please, to see who is present. Yes, call the roll, make sure it's in.
Council members McCarthy, Campbell, Coffey, Williams, Mary Davis, Folks, Guffman, Byron, Jackson, Maddox, Smith, Pitts, Banks, Valentine, Asher, Myrtle Davis, Finley, Arrington.
Okay, we have nine members present. I would like to, um, ask, um, Mrs. Debbie McCarthy to give the invocation, please. Please give the invocation. All rise for the invocation, please. All rise.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for your presence in our lives, for daily miracles, life and health, wholeness of spirit and beauty of nature. Be with those who are in need today, hungry, homeless, or in pain. Be with us in our deliberations this day. Make us thoughtful, thorough, and fair, and grant us always the wisdom and understanding to do your will. Amen.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm gonna ask that there be no movement in the chamber, and I want everybody's full attention. Kendricks, everybody just kinda sit down for one minute and kinda hear me out. What I'm really asking for, Jose, and Morris, and Barbara, Carolyn, and Debbie, is for us to have some free floor and discussion, and I'm gonna make some preliminary comments, and you all let me know how you feel about it. I'm trying to get some advice from council members who got to hear what I consider to be a very sensitive, um, matter. I have literally spent, uh, the last 24 hours dealing with this particular subject matter. I've talked to a minimum of 10 people trying to find out what is the right thing to do and what is, what we should do legally. And you hear all different versions when you have a controversy involved. Kevin Ross approached me yesterday and complained about the notice requirement. And basically what he is saying is that if you're in a grieved party, under the code section, you have the right to retain counsel. And once you retain counsel, then that lawyer ought to be given an opportunity to go out and investigate the facts in the case. It happens all the time in criminal matters where someone is arrested. I, I, I really, really don't want people moving around. If you got to do that, then you can leave the chamber. For example, in a criminal case, normally when a person is arrested late in the afternoon, like 4:00, 5:00 o'clock, he is carried before the bench the following morning, normally the lawyer gets up and say, "I like a continuing. I have not had a chance to interview my client, nor have I had an opportunity to interview the witnesses. And please give me a chance to do that." If you're in the Atlanta Municipal Court, normally they give you two weeks. If you're in Fulton County, having a preliminary hearing, normally you get four weeks to do that. That appeared to mean to be a reasonable request so that a person could interview the other candidates if he wanted to, interview a group that has been identified for me by the name of Acorn, I guess that's correct pronunciation, somebody may wanna talk to Mr. McCoy and ascertain what the facts is. Now, I think that's fair. Many years ago, judge told me, said, "Well, you get the FBI file and read." And I said, "I don't wanna read that file. I wanna make an independent investigation to make sure that I understand the witness, to have eyeball contact with that particular witness so that I can understand what is going on. I wanna make my own determination in doing that." Now, I am told that if I give, well, someone advised me that if we go beyond Monday or Tuesday, I mean Tuesday, that we're in violation of the Voting Rights Act by doing that. And that caused me some concern because I don't wanna be in violation of the Voting Rights Act. What we are trying to do is make sure that we do what is legally right and make sure that everybody have an opportunity to participate in a democratic process. So I did not fully understand going beyond Tuesday, trying to investigate all the facts, putting them on the table so that this council could come back and make some determination as to whether or not the results given to us are good valid results, or whether or not we should have a new election. That's one part of that particular discussion. Last night, I received a call, uh, from another lawyer, Mr. Walbert, who I consider to be an expert on voting rights issue. He handled the Burke County cases and other cases. And we went back and forth, and he said that under our contract, that this body did not have to certify the results because we had delegated that, in fact, to Fulton County. And in that contract, they, in fact, certified the results. And therefore, the election should stand as it is. The city attorney and the clerk disagreed with that position, emphatically disagreed with that particular result. Their position is that we ultimately, is the body to certify those particular results, and that we, in fact, certified those results on yesterday, declaring on yesterday, okay? And what have you. Uh, I am, you know, if we say we're going to proceed today, what happened if a lawyer stands up, comes before this body and says, "Mr. Arrington and council members, I have not had an opportunity to thoroughly investigate the case." You know, what is my response to that? And I just need some help because I think it's a reasonable request that a lawyer be given an opportunity to interview the witnesses and, um, and go from there. And I'd like to hear from you all on that particular issue. Mr. Guffman and anybody, please feel free to let me know how you all feel, Jose.
President, it seems to me that when you, when you strike through the emotion that's involved in something like this, and it very clearly impacts individuals, that for our discussion today, based on the Attorney General's opinion that the city attorney gave to us yesterday, and based on what the city attorney has verbalized to us, that our decision here is really determine whether or not 18 people tried to vote through absentee ballot, through the absentee ballot process, and were denied that right because they did not receive, they did not receive their absentee ballots. We're not judging whether we have a criminal offense. We do know that, that there was three votes difference between the second place finisher and the third place finisher. We also know that the court has said in previous occasions that it is not up to us or any other body to presuppose how anybody who was unable to vote, who wanted to vote, would have voted. Certainly, it's conceivable that if four people out of the 18 voted, it could have made a difference in the election. I think that it is our position today to hear how the absentee ballots in question, the applications were received, and what action was taken by the registrar's office in receiving those applications, and why, and answer some questions. With all due respect to the people who may wish to be interviewed and placed on the witness stand, if you, if you will, we know that there is certainly at least one aggrieved person as far as the results of the election were concerned, the person who could be second and not third if that's the way the votes came out. Likewise, the person who finished second and not third is also an interested party. But neither of these individuals participated directly in the refusal of the absentee ballot We know what the municipal election code says in terms of how you're supposed to handle an application for an absentee ballot. I think we need to find out, how was that process followed? Were there any violations in that process? And if there appear to be any violations, why were they, why were they done? And then we have to make a decision, were in fact, in our minds, were violations, did violations occur? And if so, do we think they're serious enough to void the election?
So you were restricted to receive an evidence from Mr. McCoy, either Gordon, as to the process or the procedures that were used in dealing with the absentee ballot? That is your suggestion?
That is my suggestion.
Okay. Archer, y'all come on and help me now, I need people to kinda talk to me.
Mr. President, members of council, after reading the investigative report yesterday and last night, it's very complicated. In my opinion, my personal opinion, this body should not handle this issue at all. I think the court should handle this issue. To be, to be fair, with everyone concerned, I believe would be best and fair to the candidates and everyone involved at the court handle this issue.
Let me respond to that, 'cause I'm trying, you're trying to help me and I'm trying to help you. Presently, under the law, we are required to hear it. We do not have an alternative.
We do not have the alternative.
You know, what I suggested to Larry last night in a very, very long conversation, that in the future, we may wanna go to the jury assembly and ask that the aggrieved party go directly to Fulton Superior Court. But presently today, this body is required by law to hear the complaint.
Uh, it seems to me out of 25, I remember, I think I read, what, 25? Out of 25, or 22 of those 25, did vote, uh, had voted for a certain party? Is this correct? It's on the report, isn't it?
Okay. Archer, and I, 'cause it is sensitive, I'm telling you, I've been dealing with it all day long. We may not wanna speculate on evidence. If we are ultimately going to hear the facts, we should let the parties come forward, testify on the oath as to what they contend, because ultimately, we are going to be the fact finders. We're going to determine. So I would urge us as impartial jurors not to set forth, set forth facts that may or may not be true and just kinda deal with it procedurally speaking. I think we ought to do that.
You know, well, I'm in a position myself where it's such a, a sensitive problem, and I know the problem we're gonna face in a few moments when that issue come before us. It's gonna be a, a, it's a type of problem that's gonna have to be given a lot of thought and a lot of thought and make a lot of decisions, I know. It's, it's a problem I'm not familiar with. It's my first time experiencing this type of problem. And I'm gonna sit here and listen. That's about all I can do at this point, really.
Okay. Uh, Jim, and then Carol on Banks, and then Mr. Jose Williams.
Mr. President.
Yes, sure. You may have to move to another mic, and we're on.
Mr. President, members of council, to specifically respond to your request, uh, let me first say that I have to concur with Councilman Guffman, who's chair of the Committee on the Council. Uh, I think that if we deal with it, what he has indicated, what we should be dealing with specifically is the procedure, whether or not the procedure in which was followed, was it followed accurately or hear the evidence on that. And I, I have to concur with that, and I, I think now to follow up on your other question is whether or not if, if one of the attorneys, uh, asked a question about, or make a, make a request that, for delay or something like that, I, I guess personally, I'll have to refer to the city attorney to respond to you, to that question. And we will, of course, I would certainly be, uh, probably more, um, agreeable to concur with the recommendation comes from the city attorney on that point.
Okay. Mrs. Banks, and then Mr. Williams.
Mr. President, pro tempore, I'm trying to get some chronological order to all of this, and maybe we can, by going step by step, come to some kind of conclusion as to where we ought to be. Now, it's my understanding that we contracted with Fulton County to run the elections, the electoral process.
Yes.
In doing so, there are some alleged discrepancies that took place.
Irregularity, yes.
Uh, the results were brought back to City Council of the election and of the irregularities. Now, first question is, does the Fulton County Commission have any authority whatsoever in this process? Or is it solely the responsibility of us as contractors with the Fulton County government?
The latter.
Okay.
Yes, the latter.
Now, we have this problem before us. Are we dealing with just one irregularity, or are we dealing with other, uh, charges that are being laid before us?
My understanding with the irregularities and not other charges, basically, the issue that has been put forth by Councilman Guffman, um, as to, uh, absentee ballots, the rules and regulations surrounding that particular issue, is what we basically dealing with and not two or three other issues.
Okay, has there been a formal complaint filed because of the absentee ballot situation?
Yes, my understanding has been a formal complaint filed.
So now, we are in the posture of listening to the evidence as far as that complaint is concerned?
Pardon me, I was distracted for momentarily. What did you say again?
I said, where we are now then is listening to the evidence, uh, lack of, or whatever, all the circumstances surrounding that particular issue only.
I think that's where we are.
Okay, so we are meeting as a committee of the whole?
Yes.
And this is a continuation of yesterday's meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And now, we are ready to bring people forth?
Yes.
And, and the ultimate result is that we are going to determine whether or not some voters have been disenfranchised from their right of voting? Is that...
I think that's part of it, uh, but whether or not the correct procedure under the law was used in counting, uh, for absentee ballots, but irregularities, you know, procedures, we're basically on the same issue, yes.
Okay, so if those are the ground rules, then we need to get on with that, I suppose. I don't understand whether...
I was trying to get a feel because I'd heard so many diverse opinions over the last 24 hours, and I wanted you all to feel comfortable as to how we were proceeding. So I was basically asking for input. And if we concur with what has been articulated by Mr. Guffman, and your assessment and others' assessment, I, I will follow that particular procedure. But I wanted us to have an understanding, uh, you know, normally the jury trial, they give you pretrial instructions. I was trying to get some dialogue so we all be on the same footing.
So according to our code, we are the body that needs to hear this?
Yes. Jose, and then Mrs. Valentine, and then Debbie.
Mr. President, the position I must take, from what I've learned up until now, that the only question before us is whether these 29, however many persons, were disenfranchised by the county registrar not responding to them. Uh, and if he did not respond to them, was his lack of response legal? I think that is the only question is before us, whether these persons were disenfranchised.
Yeah. Uh, I saw Mrs. Valentine, then I saw Debbie, Mrs. McCarthy.
Yesterday, we said we were going to hear the first complaint, I believe, from Miss Goozby, as to whether the name had been deleted correctly or not. I think we should either also hear that today along with the 29 ballot issue, or else we should set another special hearing to hear all other complaints other than just the ones dealing with the 29 ballots.
I concur with that assessment, but hear me loud and clear, we need to try to clear it up today because we set Mrs. Goozby off to next Friday, and the election is held on Tuesday, is moved.
No, I'm saying we should do, I think we should do it today.
Okay, your point is well taken. The chair will be guided accordingly.
Okay, also, in reference to what Mr. Guffman was saying, I don't, and I may have misunderstood it, I don't think we should restrict the people we hear from in regards to the 29 ballots to only the Fulton County registrar, deputy, and our attorney and part of the council. I think we should, particularly since one of our specific complaints deals with those ballots, I think we should certainly hear from that attorney and the people who had been involved in sending in the, the requests for ballots.
Trust me, the chair, Larry, let me have it for one minute. Trust me, the chair is gonna be fair in this particular matter. We've had one other situation like this, I guess, with the Campbell election, what, four, five years ago? And before I can anticipate what I'm going to rule on, I have to actually hear the evidence and make a ruling at that particular time. But I will have the city attorney with me, and I'm a pretty fair country lawyer myself. And we'll just try to proceed, and I'll be on the lookout for those types of issues and give them consideration. Does that satisfy you? Okay, Deb?
Well, a lot of my comments were the same as Ms. Valentine's. I, I wanna be sure that though we try to hear the evidence on these particular, um, conflicts or questions, that we, and that we need to focus narrowly on those, that we hear from all the parties involved in it. I think that it's important that we try to clear this up as quickly as possible for the voters of the third district so that we know whether or not we will have an election on Tuesday, who the candidates will be in that election, if we're not going to have an election on Tuesday, when the election's gonna be. And I feel that we do need to go ahead and clarify these issues, but that we need to hear from all the parties involved.
Okay, we're going to proceed, not, let me say, yes, sir, Mr. Smith.
Just wanted to be reported present.
Okay, we, I'll take care of it, I'll take care. Now, I want everybody to hear this. I also got interesting call late last night, and someone identified themselves as being Minister X. When I got to the phone, it was not Minister X. It was someone who said they was affiliated with Minister X and wanted to remind me that I had made a campaign contribution to one of the candidates, and that I may very well have a conflict of interest. Well, I made contribution to all candidates. You know, I believe in participatory, uh, participation in politics. And so, I talked with the city attorney about that, and she said, "I do not have one." But I wanna let you all know about that particular telephone call, uh, so that, uh, you know, that issue comes up. But it did come up, um, last night, and I responded by saying, you know, I went back through my checkbook, I made a hell of a lot of contributions to, uh, mostly, the largest been to Mrs. Brayboy. Uh, but, you know, I gave some money to everybody, so, 'cause I wanted to see people do it. So, yeah, yeah, you know, well, if you didn't, you get it next time, okay? So with that, I am going to call Mr. Joseph McCoy forward, please. Well, no, no, we don't need, okay, see, my eye's been dilated. Okay. Hold on, my eyes, well, I had my eyes dilated, and I'm having problem. Okay. Okay, hold one minute. What I'm going to do is do the introductory remarks, okay? And then, oh, mistake, I was... I'm trying to get to Joseph McCoy. Okay, we are, uh, you want to go back into committee on the whole?
Well, I just asked about unanimous consent, we suspend our rules.
Okay, is there any objection to that? No objection, we proceed in that fashion. Um, this is a hearing that is going to be held pursuant to the Georgia Code, OCGA, Section 21-3-420, and Section 21-3422, Code Section 1-3006 of the City Code of Atlanta. We have received a notice, where's the notice? Uh, notice in connection with this, uh, that went out to the various aggrieved parties and candidates. And it basically said, "You hereby notify pursuant to Section 21-3420 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, that the City Council of the City of Atlanta of Georgia has determined at its meeting today that it will conduct a hearing upon certain petitions contesting the declared results of the special City Council District III election held on March the 3rd, 1987. This hearing will be conducted in the council chambers at City Hall, 68 M Street, Southwest Atlanta, Georgia, commencing at the hour of 1 o'clock PM Thursday, March 19th, 1987. You as an interested party are notified of your right to attend and to be heard with regard to your rights in the contesting of the March 3rd, 1987 primary election result. The authority for conducting of this hearing by the City Council is provided by Section 21-3420 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, and by Section 1-3006 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, which authorized the City Council to hear and determine petitions addressed to it contesting the results of the municipal election in the City of Atlanta. At the hearing so scheduled, the City Council shall consider the petitions of L.M. Brayboy and Nancy Guesbe common, which petition raised the following grounds for contest to be heard and determined by City Council at said hearing. Number one, whether the name of Mr. Gutlet, a candidate who was disqualified, was not properly removed from the petition, and if so, whether such failure is grounds to void the election pursuant to OCGA Section 21-3-422. Number two, whether the names of candidate Guesbe and disqualified candidate Gutlet are confusing, similar, and whether if so, such similarity is grounds to void the election pursuant to OCGA Section 21-3-422. Number three, whether there was a number of overvoted ballots, the word "overvoted ballots" being in quote, and "no voted ballots" also being in quotes, and if so, whether such overvoted ballots and no voted ballots constitute grounds to void the election pursuant to OCGA Section 21-3-422. Number four, whether the Fulton County Director of Voter Registration failed to perform certain duties imposed upon him by law with regard to the handling of the application of absentee ballots, and if so, whether such failure to perform said duties constitutes grounds to void the election pursuant to OCGA Section 21-3422. You as an interested party are entitled to appear at this hearing to be represented by counsel of your choice, and to respond and present evidence on all issues involved. And I guess my question is, if there's anybody here who did not receive notice consistent with, uh, what I've just read, if so, raise your hand and let the Chair know at this particular time. Mr. Ross? Okay. Okay. Were your client in fact served and received proper notice? Okay, were your client served on it? Yeah. Okay, okay, okay. I'm gonna get that, I'm gonna get... Let me, uh, ask the, uh, clerk, uh, take the witness stand, please. Mr. Dingle, please raise your right hand. He swears that the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay, please state your name.
My name is Larry M. Dingle.
Okay, what is your title and official function for the City of Atlanta?
I'm Clerk of Counsel for the City of Atlanta.
Okay. Mr. Dingle, pursuant to the notice requirement, consistent with the notice that I received a few minutes ago, I would like for you to advise the council whether or not all parties were served, and if so, how they were served, and whether or not you have certification of the same.
Yes, I do. Uh, all parties were properly served as required by Georgia statute, uh, with the service being affected by, uh, a member of the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police Services on yesterday evening. I have receipts attached to the notice which give the time and place of service.
Would you please read those, and to the record, and also let us know who perfected service of process?
Person affecting service of process was Detective Hardy Mann, Bureau of Police Services, Office of the Commissioner of Public Safety, City of Atlanta. Miss L.M. Brayboy was served at 8:15 PM on yesterday evening. Person in receipt of that was Miss L.M. Brayboy. Miss Nancy Guesbe was served at 7:30 PM yesterday evening. The person in receipt of that service was Nancy Guesbe. Miss, uh, Mary, I'm sorry, Mr. Ingram, Mr. Nathaniel Ingram was served at 8:05 PM. The person in receipt of service for Mr. Ingram was Mary H. Ingram, his wife, that service affected at 8:05. Uh, Mr. Ed Kemp was, uh, was served at 8:55 PM yesterday evening. Mr. Kemp, Ed R. Kemp was the recipient of service. Mr. E.M. Laws was served at 8:45 PM. Person receiving service was Mr. Eddie M. Laws. Mr. John Lewis Senior was served at 7 o'clock PM yesterday evening. The person in receipt of service was Mr. John H. Lewis Senior. Mr. Charles McCant was served at 9:10 PM yesterday evening. The person in receipt of service was Mr. Charles McCant. Uh, Mr. Walter Mitchell was, uh, was served at 7:45 PM. The purpose, person in receipt of service was Walter L. Mitchell, uh, Mr. Mitchell's brother. Mr. Clinton Moses was served at 8:30 PM yesterday evening. The person in receipt of service was Mr. Clinton Moses. Mr. Kenneth Randall was served at 9:55 PM on yesterday evening. The person in receipt of service was Mr. Ken, Kenneth Randall. Uh, Mr. Scott... Mr. Hiram Scott, uh, was served at 7:55 PM. The person receiving service was Mrs. Latree H. Scott, Mr. Scott's mother. That was affected yesterday PM at 7:55. And Mr. Jabari Samama was served at 7:35 PM yesterday evening. The person in receipt of service was Mr. Jabari Samama.
You have heard, uh, the testimony of the Clerk of Counsel, and, uh, for the record, uh, I would like to, uh, have a roll call of people who were served to answer if they are in fact present. Uh, call those names out, please, just the name itself, and have that person stand up and see if he's present.
Mrs. L.M. Brayboy.
Mrs. Brayboy, please. She's present, okay.
Miss Nancy V. Guesbe.
She is present.
Mr. Nathaniel Ingram.
He's present.
Mr. Ed Kemp.
He's present.
Mr. Eddie M. Laws.
Mr. Laws is not present.
Mr. John H. Lewis Senior.
He's present.
Mr. Charles McCant.
He's not present.
Mr. Lucius C. Mitchell.
He's present and was served.
Mr. Clinton Moses. Mr. Kenneth J. Randall. Mr. Hiram Scott. Mr. Jabari Samama.
Your interview, uh, contained that you were not served as indicated by the clerk. If so, please advise the Chair at this particular time. There being no objection, uh, we are going to conclude that people were served in accordance with the pronouncement, uh, made by the Clerk of Counsel, um, Mr. Larry, uh, Dingle. Um, those parties which, wish, wishing to testify, um, uh, come part, come forward, and you would have, uh, five minutes to make an opening statement. Yes, ma'am.
Is this on either of the issues, or is this on one of the issues?
Well, I would like for the first issue, dealing with, uh, Mr. McCoy, and, uh, absentee ballot to be taken up, and then subsequently, we'll take up the second issue. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, Kevin, just hold on for one minute. And I guess I'm required, um, to vote out each council member. Hold it, let me, hold it. Y'all hear me out for a few minutes. Uh, and I'm required by law, um, that's whether any member of council was involved in the contests, uh, and have a vested interest in the outcome, where there would not be a fair and impartial juror in this particular matter. If so, raise your hand at this particular time. Yes, sir.
My question, Mr. President, would be, suppose you weren't involved up in this period, but then you got involved later on?
I would have to go further and ask what that involvement consisted of.
Well, I guess support in the form of a financial contribution, a speech, uh...
For a particular candidate?
Yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, 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 y'all, y'all hear me out, okay? I would think that would disqualify you, if you in fact have publicly made an announcement for a particular candidate, and have made a contribution, and that has in fact become your candidate in that particular, uh, race, uh, the Chair will rule that would be a disqualification.
And, Mr. President, I'm not talking, I'm talking about after the fact, after the decision is made here.
Oh, do I have to today?
Yes, sir.
Oh, no, 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 I think you'd be, uh, no, no. Uh, no, no, you're qualified to sit, as to what your future intent is, uh, I don't think that would disqualify you. Now, when I said parties would make opening statements, I was talking about the people who in fact filed the complaint, uh, in this particular matter. Um, it said that open arguments will be limited to five minutes per party, and closing arguments will be limited to 10 minutes, uh, per party. And also designate Jesse Behren as the official, um, timekeeper, so that he can, uh, advise us as to the time limitation, so, uh, we can have someone who is, uh, unbiased. I would call the party representing Mrs. Brayboy to come first. Let the record reflect, okay? Yes, and Mrs. Mary Davis. State your name for the record.
Mr. President, my name is Richard Grigsby. I am counsel to L.M. Brayboy in this matter. I need to ask one procedural question. As I understand your instructions, this is merely an opening statement, there is no evidence tendered at this point, we are merely setting forth our claim.
Well, I think you can make an opening statement, and immediately thereafter, I will start taking evidence.
Um, very well. As I said, I'm rep, my name is Richard Grigsby, I represent L.M. Brayboy in this matter. We filed a petition of contest, uh, to set aside the results of the special election held March 3rd, 1987. Uh, the basis of that context is, of the contest is the following. Um, Mrs. Brayboy, uh, a duly fi, a duly qualified candidate is bringing this action pursuant to OCGA Georgia Municipal Election Code 21-3422-1 on the following ground, that being that misconduct or irregularity by an election official occurred in this matter sufficient to change or place in doubt the result of the election, and that such misconduct or irregularity directly resulted in the denial of the right to vote to properly qualified electors, and that...
We just got to do it better than we do council meeting. We got to do it, because he is now into his opening argument, and we just got to follow him. I'm not fussing, I'm just asking us to be conscious of where we're going. Okay.
And that in the instant election, in which a difference of only three votes determined which of two candidates qualified to proceed to a runoff election, the denial of such right to vote is sufficient in itself to change or place in doubt the result of the election, thereby justifying that this body set aside and void the result of this election in accordance with Georgia law. Now, the specifics of our complaint are this, Mr. President. Uh, the issue that is presented to the council today is this. Um, whether the failure of the Director of Fulton County Office of Voter Registration to perform specific duties expressly imposed upon him by statute found at OCGA 21-3283C resulted in qualified electors being erroneously denied the right to vote, and whether such denial did in fact cast the outcome of this election, um, into doubt sufficient to set aside the election result. Having said that, Mr. President, at this point, I'd like to tender into evidence a certified copy of certain excerpts, excerpts of a March 10th, 1987 meeting of the Board of Registration and Elections.
Yes, sir, let me have, let the clerk, uh, put his official seal on it, and, uh, you can just write his initial and put the time down. Put your initial and the time.
Mr. President, OCGA 21-3283, in its relevant part, uh, governs the making of application for absentee ballots. It also imposes clear and specific duties on the absentee ballot clerk with respect to determining the eligibility of such electors. In the relevant part of the statute, it says, "Upon receipt of a timely application, the absentee ballot clerk shall enter thereon the..."
Rick, my question is, we just in opening statement, I don't want you to get in closing, I want you to move into your evidence, and then at the conclusion of that, you can come in, uh, and do your closing.
All right. In, in that case, I would also, well, the gist of the case is that absentee, there, an individual delivered 29 applications for absentee ballots to the office of the, of the voter registrar. Um, those, those applications were received. A day later, there was some contact which occurred between that office and the individual who brought them in. That individual was informed that, uh, the submission did not comply there... That individual was informed that the submission did not comply, therefore he was, they were returned for the purpose of being mailed as per the statute. They were subsequently received between February 26 and 29. 29 applications for absentee ballots. Between the time of that receipt and the election, the Director of Voter Registration did not process the applications as required by law, number one. He did not notify the electors who were deprived of their right to cast a ballot by his failure to process them of the alleged grounds of their ineligibility as required by statute. It's our contention that the failure to do those acts effectively deprived 18 voters who evidenced their intent to participate in this election by the act of submitting the application, deprived them of the right to vote. And we are going to cite a case on point as to how this matter should be resolved, which essentially holds that where qualified electors are denied the right to vote, a complaining candidate need not establish how the rejected voters would have voted, he need only establish that sufficient legal votes were rejected to change or place in doubt the outcome of the election. And that's the crux of this case. In a matter in which a mere three votes separates the candidate who was going to participate in the runoff, when 18 voters are denied the right to cast their ballots, the outcome is placed sufficiently in doubt to justify this matter being set aside and a new election held.
Call your first witness.
My first witness, I'd like to call Mr. Gordon Joyner.
Okay. Mr. Joyner, come forward, please. Stand here at the podium. Sit here, okay. Would you raise your right hand, please? Swear that the testimony that you're about to give in this case would be the truth, the whole truth, and other but the truth, so help you God. Okay. Please take your seat.
Mr. Joyner, would you state your name for the record, please?
Gordon Lane Joyner.
And would you please tell us your official capacity in this matter?
I am Chairman of the Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections.
Mr. Joyner, um, do you have a copy of the minutes of the meeting at issue?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Joyner, was there a meeting of the Board of Registrations and Elections held on March 10, 1987?
Yes, there was. It was the regularly scheduled monthly meeting of the board.
And at that meeting, was there a report received by Mr. Joseph McCoy, Chairman of the registrar of Fulton County?
There was a report received from Mr. McCoy.
And in that report, was there a discussion of a situation that arose with respect to 28 absentee, 29 absentee ballots?
Yes, there was. If I might give a little bit of background, just for purposes of chronology. The special election was held on March 3, 1987 pursuant to contract with the City of Atlanta. The election was administratively and ministerially conducted by the Fulton County Department of Elections and Registration under the offices of the Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections. After the vote returns had been received on Election Day, March 3, on the very next day, Wednesday, March 4, the board met to receive the returns for purposes of considering certifying those returns. Those returns were in fact certified on Wednesday, March 4. Subsequent to that time, as provided by law, the third place finisher, Ms. Brayboy, exercised her right for an automatic recount of those votes since the difference between her vote tally and the second place finisher was less than 1%. She filed that request with Mr. Larry Dingle, clerk of the council. Mr. Dingle subsequently notified the Board of Registration and Elections to conduct the recount on Friday of that week, March 6. That recount was conducted on Friday, March 6. The Board of Registration and Elections held a meeting subsequent to that recount for purposes of considering certifying the recount results. The board did in fact certify the recount results on Friday, March 6. So up to that point, the board had held two meetings, on Wednesday, March 4, and on Friday, March 6. Had not received any information at all regarding the subject absentee ballots. On Tuesday, March 10, the board held its regularly scheduled monthly meeting for the month of March. During the course of that meeting, Mr. McCoy, as Director of the Office of Voter Registration, under which administrative offices the Board of Registration and Elections supervises it, Mr. McCoy, at that time, the afternoon of March 10, for the very first time, notified the Board of Registration and Elections that he had received what he identified at that time as is indicated in the transcript of the meeting minutes, which we have provided to the council members through the clerk of the city council. As indicated in the very first sentence of those minutes, he indicated that he had received 22 applications for absentee ballots, subsequently determined to be 29 applications for absentee ballots. The board inquired into that matter at that meeting extensively, as is pointed out in the transcript. The board came to the conclusion that this was a very serious matter, that the 29 applications for absentee ballots had not been processed by Mr. McCoy. And for that reason, during the course of that meeting, we telephoned the solicitor of Fulton County, notified him of this matter, and put him on notice that that afternoon, that's Mr. James Webb, Solicitor General of Fulton County, that we were going to hand carry to Mr. Webb the 29 applications for absentee ballots. Mr. Webb was put on hold waiting for us to bring those applications. Those applications were carried to him with the following letter, which we prepared at the board meeting. I believe the council members and the clerk also have a copy of this letter. It stated March 10, 1987, hand-delivered to Honorable James L. Webb, Solicitor General, State Court of Fulton County, 160 Pryor Street, Southwest Room 53, Atlanta, Georgia 30335. Dear Solicitor Webb, Attached are 29 absentee ballot applications with the envelopes in which they were mailed, which were received in the Fulton County Office of Voter Registration prior to the March 3, 1987, City of Atlanta, Council District 3 Special Election, but which were not responded to by that office due to suspicion of improper activity in connection with the solicitation and presentation of said applications. The Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections learned of this occurrence and received said applications to date, March 10, at our regular monthly board meeting from Mr. Joseph McCoy, Director of Said Office of Voter Registration, and we here are referring this matter to your office for appropriate investigation and subsequent action, if any. That letter is signed and submitted by me as Chairman of the Board and by each of the individual members of the board. Subsequent to that submission to Mr. Webb, Mr. Dingle, clerk of the Atlanta City Council, is also notified of the receipt and non-processing of the 29 applications for absentee ballots.
Let me stop you there for a minute, Mr. Joyner. I need to ask another question of the president.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, do the members of the council have in their possession copies of the applications for absentee ballots at issue?
No, we do not. What we would do is have you to tender that. At the testimony, we will consider that during our deliberation.
All right, I'm prepared to make that tender. Mr. Joyner, is the basis of the board's concern best summarized, when you say there's a very serious matter at issue and you referred it to the solicitor, was there concern on your part that the registrar's office took action inconsistent with the code?
That's correct. The Municipal Election Code, which provides the basis for conducting the City of Atlanta's Special Election for Council District 3 on March 3, provides specifically in Section 21-3-283(c) what the duties and responsibilities are for Mr. McCoy in his position upon timely receipt of applications for absentee ballots.
Mr. Joyner, do you have before you a copy of that code provision?
Yes, I do.
Would you please read that provision, 21-3-283(c) in its entirety?
In its entirety?
Just c.
In its entirety?
Yes.
In that case, I'll have to get my copy, counsel.
We also have here, if you need it, a copy of the official code, Title 21, Book 18, if you need it.
If I may say preliminarily, for purposes...
Excuse me once more. Mr. President, in order to ask a subsequent question, it's going to be necessary that the witness be able to review a copy of the absentee ballots at issue. These are the same that I wish to tender in evidence, but at this point, I'd like to convey them to Mr. Joyner.
Okay. I was going to say, for purposes of clarification, that there are two election codes in the state of Georgia. One applies to all elections other than municipal elections. Official Code of Georgia Annotated 21-2-15 reads as follows. This chapter shall apply to any general or special election in this state to fill any federal, state, or county office, to any general or special primary to nominate candidates for any such office, and to any federal, state, or county election or primary for any other purpose whatsoever, provided, however, that it shall not apply to any municipal primary or election. Section 21-3-14 of Official Code of Georgia Annotated provides that this chapter, known as the Georgia Municipal Elections Code, shall apply to any special election in every municipal corporation of this state to fill any municipal office. So a first import is that this election is governed by the provisions of the Georgia Municipal Elections Code. Section 21-3-283 of the Georgia Municipal Elections Code is entitled, "Application for Ballot." Subsection c...
Could you, would you read that, that heading in its entirety beyond the semicolon, please?
Application for Ballot, semicolon, time limit on application. Subsection c of that code section, which you have asked me to read in its entirety, reads as follows. Upon receipt of a timely application, the absentee ballot clerk shall enter thereon the date received and shall determine if the applicant is eligible to vote in the primary or election involved. If found eligible, the absentee ballot clerk shall certify by signing in the proper place in the application and either mail the ballot, as provided in Code Section 21-3-284, deliver the ballot to the elector within the confines of the absentee ballot clerk's office, or deliver the ballot in person to the elector if he is confined to a hospital. If found ineligible, the clerk shall deny the application by writing the reason for the rejection in the proper space on the application and shall promptly notify the applicant in writing of the ground of his ineligibility, a copy of which should be retained on file in the office of the absentee ballot clerk. If the absentee ballot clerk is unable to determine the identity of the elector from information given on the application, he should promptly write to request additional information. That is that code section in its entirety.
Mr. Joyner, I have put in front of you copies of a number of documents that I have identified as copies of the applications for absentee ballots. Would you review that and give me your best judgment as to whether that in fact is what I have stated they are?
They are what you have stated they are. I should state to the council and to the president of the council that as indicated in my reading of our letter of March 10, our, meaning the Board of Registration and Elections, of March 10, 1987, the actual absentee ballot applications and the envelopes in which they were submitted, in which they were mailed, were sent directly to the Solicitor General for Fulton County. Those absentee ballot applications have remained in the custody of the Solicitor General for Fulton County up until today. I received a phone call today, in my capacity as Chairman of the Board, indicating that the clerk of council pursuant to the meeting yesterday had requested that the solicitor provide those applications to the clerk of council. And I authorized the transfer of those original applications and the envelopes which they were mailed in to the clerk of council, and it is my understanding that that is where the originals are at this time.
Let me ask you a question in my capacity, presiding officer.
Yes, sir.
Have those votes been tabulated in any way, shape, form, or fashion to this date, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, of the 29 absentee ballot applications, all but 18 of the electors, in fact, went to the polls and cast votes. But 18 of the applicants not having received absentee ballot, not having received absentee ballots also did not go to the polls and vote. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Mr. Joyner, would you look through the documents I have placed on your desk that we have identified as true and correct copies of those applications and tell me if there is a place on those documents where they are date stamped as received?
On the copies which you have given me, which I am just going to accept on information and belief, are true and correct copies of the originals that are now in the possession and custody of the clerk of council. I will address them in that sense if that's acceptable to president of council.
My question is, where are the originals?
I believe the clerk of council has...
Okay, let us...
Has custody of the originals.
He will deliver these to you. I would like to deal with the originals.
And as I indicated earlier, the chain of custody of these original documents was on March 10 from Mr. Joseph McCoy to the Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections, on March 10 from the Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections to the Solicitor General for Fulton County, and on March 19 from the Solicitor General of Fulton County to Mr. Larry Dingle, clerk of the council.
Mr. Joyner, let me direct your attention to the upper portion of these documents, midway the top of the page, in some instances, a bit to the right. Does your visual inspection reveal a date stamp on those documents?
Yes, it does.
Does that appear on all of the documents? Now, Mr. Joyner, let me again direct your attention to the first sentence of 213-283(c). Would you please read that sentence for the benefit of the council?
Upon receipt of a timely application, the absentee ballot clerk shall enter thereon the date received and shall determine if the applicant is eligible to vote in the primary or election involved.
Now, let me direct your attention about midway through that paragraph, there's a sentence that begins with "if found ineligible." Would you please read that sentence for the benefit of the council?
If found ineligible, the clerk shall deny the application by writing the reason for the rejection in the proper space on the application and shall promptly notify the applicant in writing of the ground of his ineligibility, a copy of which should be retained on file in the office of the absentee ballot clerk.
Now, Mr. Joyner, let me direct your attention again to each of these documents that we have identified as the applications for absentee ballots. There is an area at the bottom of these instruments that says for office use only. Would you read everything that is in that area for the council?
There is a block located at the bottom of the documents that is enclosed. It reads, "For office use only." Date application received, and there's a line after that. Date ballot mailed, and there's a line after that. Date ballot returned, and there's a line after that. And then the following language is shown. "I hereby certify that," first block, "the above-named voter is eligible to receive an absentee ballot." Second block, "The above-named voter is ineligible to receive an absentee ballot." Following that is the language, "Reason for rejection," and there are two lines for that reason to be indicated on. And then at the bottom is a line for the signature of the registrar.
Now, Mr. Joyner, would you look at each of those documents before you and tell the council whether any of them indicate that the voter is eligible to receive an absentee ballot?
Are you asking me whether or not the block that has the language, "I hereby certify that the above-named voter is eligible to receive an absentee ballot," has been checked?
Yes, that is my question.
No, that block has not been checked on either of the applications.
Now, my next question is to direct your attention to the area provided for making the determination as to ineligibility. Is there any notation on any of the documents in front of you that would, that would detail a finding of ineligibility as to any of the applicants for absentee ballots?
No, there is not.
Is there any place on the documents before you that give a reason for rejection of any of the same?
As I testified earlier, there is a blank space on the document for that purpose.
Let me rephrase my question. On any of the documents before you, is there a reason stated for rejection?
No, there is not.
Is there a signature of the registrar on any of those documents before you as to making a determination of, of eligibility or ineligibility?
No, there is not.
Now, Mr. Joyner, to your knowledge, after these ballots were received, and after no action of record was made on them as to determining ineligibility, as per the requirement of the statute, that the registrar notify the applicant, to your knowledge, was any notification from the registrar to the prospective elector given?
As is indicated in the transcript of the Board's March 10th meeting, no, we have no such knowledge, and to this day, I have no knowledge that information has been provided to the individual applicants in writing or otherwise informing them why their applications for absentee ballots were not processed.
Now, let me summarize for the benefit of the council the testimony that we've just received from you. Is it my understanding that there is a statute that prescribes the duties of the registrar with respect to handling applications for absentee ballots?
The statute prescribes the duties for the absentee ballot clerk under the Municipal Election Code. In this election, the role and responsibility of the absentee ballot clerk was performed by the registrar for Fulton County.
And is it my understanding that the registrar, that that person is to?
Rick, we're going to be very, very liberal, but you summarize, you lead. Just ask Gordon a question, let him respond to it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is it your testimony, Mr. Joyner, that, that applications for absentee ballots were properly received in the mail?
Yes.
Is it your further testimony that there appears to have been no action taken of record with respect to determining eligibility or ineligibility of those applicants who submitted those applications?
Yes.
Is it further your testimony that there is a statute that specifically directs the process of making that determination?
Yes.
Is it therefore your testimony that it appears that that statute was not complied with?
Yes.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
I am trying to make a determination as to process of the procedure for cross-examination, if anybody want to conduct cross-examination. And that's what I'm pondering, Gordon, give me just a few minutes. Marv. The City Attorney concurs in, in my assessment, and that is, we ought to allow any party who received notice, who want the cross-examination, Gordon, to do so. If there's anybody who would like to cross-examine at this particular time, raise your hand. Okay. 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 Mr. McCoy. And then we'll have Kevin come, Kevin, you. Let me, hold on for a minute, hold on for a minute. Joe, come forward, please. Marv.
All right, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to state my position.
No, sir. Mr. Ross. Did you raise your hand a while ago, Kevin? Okay, come forward.
Mr. President, since this is my first opportunity to address the council in this session, I've got several questions about what normally would be in the nature of pre-trial motions, requests for instructions. The whole procedure is obviously very unusual. I just wanted to know when will be the appropriate time to entertain those sort of motions or requests?
Okay. State your name for the record. Procedures is not unusual, at the time that you come forward, I was going to let you make any motion. If you want to do it now, go right ahead and make those particular motions.
Okay. My first motion in this matter is that, first of all, my name is Kevin Ross, I'm representing candidate Jabari Zamama in this matter, and my first motion is that I believe, based on information that I've gathered the last day or two, that there should be granted a continuance in this matter. I think this procedure going forward today is unconstitutional, it is a violation of procedural due process. Less than 24 hours' notice is an inadequate time to prepare for a full evidentiary hearing. The statutes in question, the Atlanta City Code on point, contemplates subpoenaing witnesses and documents. The Administrative Procedure Act, which is applicable to this, contemplates offers of proof and receiving rulings on that, and 24 hours is just inappropriate to do that sort of preparation. So at this point, since this is my first chance to speak, I would move for a continuance to allow council time to properly, fairly, and adequately prepare for this hearing.
Motion denied. What is your next motion?
My sec, second motion is that I move that the Clerk of Council be disqualified from participating in this matter. Under the city code, it is clearly contemplated that he is to be the advocate for the upholding of the election, and I don't believe that he is functioning in that capacity. That is, since this has been such an expedited process, I would like to have had time to do more investigation on that point. I know Larry to be a fair, outstanding individual, but I'm not sure that at this point, he is fulfilling the role that is contemplated for him under the city code.
Okay. Motion denied. What is your next motion?
On that point, let me go forward with Gordon. Gordon.
Yes.
Are you aware that of the 18 voters who didn't vote, 18 of those 29 that the absentee applications were submitted on behalf of, that 16 got actual notice of the rejection of their application?
No, I'm not aware.
Okay. Are you aware that of the two voters who didn't get noticed, that one voted, but her ballot was voided?
No, I'm not aware.
Say that again, Ms. Ross.
I asked Gordon, was he aware that of the two voters of that 29 who did not get notice that their applications had been rejected, one actually voted, but her ballot was voided? I'm asking him if he's aware of that.
My testimony is that I am not aware of what you are asking by way of a question as something that actually happened. No, I am not aware of that.
Those are my only questions for Mr. Joyner.
Okay. The other parties would like to cross-examine, oppose questioning Mr. Joyner at this particular time. Okay. Call your next witness. Yes, no, ma'am. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Rick, do you have other witnesses?
At this point, I am prepared to go into a discussion of the applicable law in this matter.
So you don't have any additional witnesses?
No, I don't.
Okay. Go right ahead and make your argument. Hosea, Bill, he about to make his closing with me, do you want to?
In summarizing what's just occurred, we've had testimony to the effect that there's a statute that clearly defines responsibilities with respect to matters of this nature. What is required is that a determination as to eligibility to vote by absentee ballot be made. It appears from the testimony offered and not contradicted that there was no such determination made. Further, that statute requires that in the event of a determination of ineligibility, that notice be given to the elector, the person who is trying to vote. And there is no evidence in this matter that any notice was given to those 29 individuals who wanted to vote in this election, that there was any problem with their application for absentee ballot. Now, to wrap all this up and to explain the significance of this appeal, the initial results of, of the March 3rd, 1987 special election showed a difference of two votes between the second-place finisher, Mr. Zamama, who had 324, and my client, Mrs. Brayboy, who had 322. Now, a recount, as has been discussed, was held at our motion, and that recount revealed a difference of three votes. This time, 327 for Mr. Zamama, and our vote stayed the same. Now, clearly, the relevance of those facts is that there's a margin of three votes that determined what candidate gets into the runoff. Now, our contention is that in this election, 18 qualified electors did not vote because of the failure of the registrar's office to perform duties expressly required by the Georgia Municipal Election Code. Moreover, in an election in which only three votes determine which of two competitors proceeds to a runoff, the registrar's breach of this statutory duty is sufficient under Georgia law to cast the outcome of the election in doubt, thereby justifying that the election be set aside. Now, the case law on point that justifies the contention I just made is found at Whittington versus Mathis, which is at 253 Georgia 653. It's a 1985 unanimous decision of the Georgia Supreme Court. Now, this case involved an action that was brought by an unsuccessful candidate in the Albany City Council election. Court held in that case that there was evidence that four voters were wrongfully turned away from the election, and that that election resulted in a two-vote difference between the victor and an unsuccessful candidate. Now, the court held in that case that the fact that those voters were turned away and the fact of the margin of difference was sufficient without evidence as to how those rejected voters would have voted to support an order setting aside the election. Specifically, the court found that under Georgia law, the unsuccessful candidate need not establish how the rejected voter would have voted, he need only establish that sufficient legal votes were rejected to change or place in doubt the result. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, our argument simply is that clearly the failure of the Fulton County Registrar to properly discharge duties mandated by law resulted in 18 qualified electors being denied the right to vote in an election in which merely three votes determined who goes to the runoff. And under Whittington, the case that I just cited, such error is sufficient on its face to change or to place in doubt the result of the election, and accordingly, we argue that this election should be set aside. Moreover, there's a final point I'd make, that the, the burden in this matter is on the registrar if he concludes that someone is ineligible to give notice to that person, the elector himself, because that's where the right to cast the ballot resides. And our argument is that burden was not met. Therefore, the election should be set aside.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to be heard as to the procedure that was used in absentee ballot on that limited issue? Okay, nobody has, okay. Rick just concluded his argument as relates to the absentee ballot, or the procedure that was used, the certification of it. And I was asking if anybody else wanted to present evidence on that particular issue? You should move forward on that particular issue now, if you want to be heard, and you have evidence separating apart from what Mr. Grisberg has presented to the council. Yes, feel free to do so. Well, I think we would want to hear that evidence as to how it would actually, and you can proceed as soon, as soon as Jonathan get through.
For the record, my name is Jonathan Oden, I represent Mrs. Goolsby. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call Mr. McCoy to the stand if I could.
Mr. Joseph McCoy, come forward, please. Mr. McCoy, raise your right hand, please. You swear that the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay. Please state your name, please, for the record.
Joseph C. McCoy, Chief Registrar, Fulton County.
Mr. McCoy, if you will, describe the procedures that you have.
Talk a little louder, Joe, directly to these, so everybody can hear you. Go right ahead.
Mr. McCoy, if you will, describe the procedures that you have established in your office regarding the hand-delivery of absentee ballots.
Be happy to. The hand-delivery of absentee ballots is on its face improper and unacceptable. They can be thrown in the trash can upon receipt, they are not absentee ballot applications, they are absentee ballot application forms, and are not, and the registrars are not duty-bound to act upon them at all.
And in this particular instance, can you explain how is it that your office took possession or took receipt of the absentee ballot applications in question?
I certainly will. The registrars are in absolute control from the time an absentee ballot application is received, to the processing of that absentee ballot application, to the mailing of the absentee ballots, to the receipt of the absentee ballots, to the safekeeping of to the safekeeping of those absentee ballots all the way until seven o'clock of the, on the election day before counting. And during that period of time, it is incumbent, it is by far the duty of the registrar, and only the registrar can act upon suspicious nature of these absentee ballots.
My question, Mr. McCoy, is how is it, if I understood your response to the first question being that it is improper for an individual to hand-deliver to your office an absentee ballot application, then how is it that twenty-nine such applications came to be received by your office?
An individual who identified himself as Grant Williams, associated with an organization called Acorn, indicated that he brought those applications in, in bulk, and delivered them by hand over the counter to our office.
And my question is, have you been able to identify the individual or individuals in your office who accepted these applications that you maintain should not have been accepted?
I think we have a difference in interpretation here with respect to the word "accepted."
Well, let me clarify then, if I will. As I understand your response to the first question, your response was that these applications are not to be accepted. And as does that definition of "accepted" mean they are not supposed to be taken by anyone in your office over the counter, period?
It is, it, it means that you may receive them, but they are not acceptable.
And at that point, you're saying that as a policy in your office that people can accept absentee ballot applications from voters interested in voting, but can merely turn around and put them in the trash?
I'm not saying that at all. I have indicated that we were not aware of the absentee ballots in our office at the time of, at the time that they arrived. Ms. Colson found the applications, application forms on her desk and brought them to my attention as absentee ballot application forms of which she had no idea of their origin.
And my question is, uh, based on your investigation then, are you maintaining that someone from the public accepted?
We knew immediately that they were not accepted.
And when did you take it upon yourself to notify those individuals that those applications--
We did not know who to, uh, who to get in touch with at the time because we were not going to handle these application, application forms in the form that they were presented.
Mr. McCoy, did not the applications have the names and addresses of the individuals whose applications they purported to be?
But they were unacceptable on their face.
Mr. McCoy, my question is--
Yes, yes.
And you're saying that based on the fact that you had the name--
Hold on one minute. Jonathan, he has the right to answer questions, yes, no, and then give his explanation for it. Mr. McCoy, if you in fact want to give an explanation to that last question, you have the right to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were in receipt of absentee ballot application forms and had already, prior to the knowledge of who had entered and placed those absentee ballot forms, that we would not act on these forms based on the fact that they, in our opinion, and our opinion is the controlling opinion as registrars, did not meet the qualifications of an absentee ballot request.
And based on that determination that you made in your office, my question is, did you or someone from your office take any steps to notify these individuals whose applications had been tendered, that these applications were not considered acceptable by your office?
No, they were not of the form for which we were legally, or, uh, attuned to the fact that we would notify. We had no idea where they came from.
Now, are you saying they were not of the form, meaning that they were not on the form that your office provided?
No, in the form of their presentation.
So you're saying their delivery was not acceptable?
Exactly.
And you're saying that based on the fact that their delivery was not acceptable, you chose in your office to ignore these applications?
We did not ignore the application. We simply did not process the application.
And, and in the process of not processing these applications, you merely kept them in your office? Is that correct?
We kept them in our office to the extent that an individual called identified himself as the person having brought those application forms into our office. We explained to him, at that point, the proper procedure for submitting absentee applications for our processing.
Now, let me ask you this, Mr. McCoy. Whose applications did you perceive these to be? The persons whose names were on the applications or the individual that contacted you that said he delivered them?
We did not perceive the applications as applications. They were application forms that were improperly submitted.
And whose forms did you perceive these to be? The individual that claimed he delivered them or the individuals whose names had been entered on the application and who had signed these applications?
If any ones at all, we had to perceive them under the auspices of the receipt to be the person who brought them in because we could not process them under, uh, in the situation that we were in.
Did any time in this process of making these determinations that you seek the advice of outside counsel or someone in the elections office who would have had a legal background?
No. People in the elections office have no jurisdiction over these absentee ballot applications.
Who, I'm asking, is there anybody in your chain of command or is there anybody made available to you who would have been instrumental in helping you make a legal decision regarding the form of these applications and whether or not they were acceptable or not?
Uh, that question I cannot answer, except to say that it is incumbent upon the registrars who have hearing responsibility, who have subpoena power, whose rulings have the, have the, uh, findings and rulings have the force of law until such time as overturned by a superior court. We must make that decision.
And I'm, my question simply goes to who was consulted in your office that would have been able to offer a legal opinion as to your questions regarding form?
No one, no one in my office was consulted because I am head of that office.
And your, your testimony before the panel is, based on your determination as to the fact that the form was not proper, your office on your, under your authority held these forms and, until it subsequently delivered them to an individual who claimed that he had delivered them to your office?
Exactly.
I understand that sometime or another, uh, these forms that you were concerned with were subsequently received by mail. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Did this process of receiving them by mail versus receiving them by some form of hand-delivery set aside your concerns as to the form of these applications?
No, they didn't.
And what was your concern, concern, concerning the form when they were received by mail?
Upon delivering these absentee ballot application forms back to the individual who indicated that they were his property, he was instructed, because of the time constraints, to deliver these absentee ballot application forms back to the individuals for whom they were supposedly tendered to the registrar's office and have those individuals to send those application forms back to us by mail, if in fact these individuals all indicating that they were disabled, all were twenty-six of the twenty-nine, three of them having voted in person, twenty-six individuals having indicated, uh, under oath that they were disabled and could not get to the polls, have them to send those applications back to us by mail, as per law. He did not do so.
And you're saying that he did not do it based on what, Mr. McCoy?
These applications were taken from our office on one day. They were all apparently very, and our findings being, after the fact, of course, but our findings being, but apparently even very much so, at the time, the envelopes were all addressed, postage put on them, put in the mail at the same time, at the same place, and mailed back to us.
Is this based on your subsequent investigation with the, uh, conversation with the person?
It is based on more than--
Excuse me, let me finish my question. The apparent nature of what was done is this based on some investigative action that was taken on a part of your office?
The investigative action started immediately after the, uh, individual walked out with those application forms.
Let me rephrase my question, Mr. McCoy. And if you will, answer with a yes or no fashion, and then you may elaborate.
Thank you.
Was there some investigation conducted by your office to determine that in fact, these forms were not mailed as you had instructed?
Yes.
And who was the individual that conducted that investigation?
Uh, myself and Ms. Bunny Colson.
And what exactly did you all do in the process of conducting this investigation?
We first matched each of the envelopes with each other for the handwriting specification, uh, specimen. We also drew upon our expertise and experience over the years that tells us that what we have here are the same bogus, no-good application forms dressed up, a wolf dressed up in sheep's clothing. We knew that we had a bomb in our hand and that the individual that sent it to us in a Valentine box could not convince us that they were chocolate.
May I see the, may I see the copies of the, uh, may I see the original applications, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. McCoy, while we're doing that, may I help the council? If you explain how absentee ballots are processed? Would you explain that to us?
I would be glad to, uh, Mr. Chairman. Unlike, uh, apparently is the impression, absentee ballot applications have an extensive process to which we must take them through. We must first arrive at the conclusion that an absentee ballot, on its face, is a proper absentee ballot to the best of our knowledge. At that point, we must take the names and addresses from that absentee ballot application and, and list it on a numbered list of voters. We must fill out paperwork with respect to the name and address of the applicant and when the application was received, what date the application, I mean, the ballot was sent. We must take the ballot, put it into an inner envelope with styrofoam and a punch, put the inner envelope into a, an outer envelope which has been typed with the name and address, et cetera, of the individual on it. We must mail that absentee ballot out. And upon receipt, we must take that absentee ballot, we must, uh, take it back to the paperwork to determine on this paperwork when it was received, and we must keep it in, uh, put it in safekeeping. And for the council's knowledge, time constraints tell us through experience that we need six, seven, sometimes eight days. We have received ballots back fifty days, but we need a minimum of six to seven days to make this process viable.
Have you finished, Mr. McCoy? I've given you an absentee ballot application. I think the person's name may not be very relevant to my line of question at this point. But is there not a set of instructions on the bottom that says for voter out of county? Isn't there a set of instructions with, on this absentee ballot? Doesn't this absentee ballot give a person's family member, as is described on the form itself, the right to request for the individual voter? Whether the individual voter is there to make that request or not?
It does.
Now, in all of these particular documents, you had a signature that actually purported to be the signature of the interested voter, did it not?
Poured it to be.
And what you're telling this council that even though these applications were signed by the individual voters, that what you felt was improper was the fact that they had gotten someone to assist them in filling these forms out?
I have not said that.
Well, what exactly are you telling this council, Mr. McCoy, in light of the fact that these forms have been signed by the individual voters?
I am telling this council that it is not the duty, nor is it proper for the abs, for the registrars to act upon absentee ballot forms that are not properly introduced.
Okay. Now, properly introduced meaning that, in fact, if these twenty-nine individuals solicited the aid of somebody to address the envelopes, that you, even though these applications had all the original signatures of what appeared to be the original signatures of the voters, that you made the determination in your office that the fact that a person coincidentally filled out the envelopes for these individuals would make the application unacceptable?
Not saying that at all.
Well, what exactly are you saying, Mr. McCoy, in light of the fact that these forms have the original signatures on them?
At the time that we received these signatures by mail, again, I'm indicating to this council that they are the same no-good application forms that we received. However, under the, under the signature, uh, question that you, that you're making, we at this time, we're talking about the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth of the month. We must now, by law, if I might quote twenty-one dash two dash two thirty-six, where it states, "The board of registrars of each county shall have the right and shall be charged with the duty to examine from time to time the qualifications of each elector." Under the circumstances, the very suspicious circumstances under which we receive these application forms, we are duty-bound now to investigate these things before we act on them.
And, Mr. McCoy, did you in fact contact these electors to investigate to see if that in fact was their signature?
Their signature--
Mr. McCoy, please answer my question, yes or no?
No. Their signature on, in, on this particular application is moot. It doesn't matter whether or not they're signing--
You're saying that your inter--
It does not matter whether or not the signature is authentic, and we must check this out under suspicious circumstance. If the form is not received properly, and if I may give you another example, an individual's cousin can bring in an application form that he has made out for an individual who is a relative of his, but a cousin. The law will not allow us to accept that as a proper form submitted to the registrars. We will reject it.
It has to be in the mail?
No. No. The make, person can be out of town. But a mother, a father, a son, a daughter, specifically designated in the election code must bring this thing to our office.
So you can't accept them, you can't accept them in your office if they are brought by someone that's designated?
If someone is brought by designated, and we find that the, the, the other parts of the form, and we do all the time, are correct and proper.
But, Mr. McCoy, my concern is the fact that someone in your office made a determination that these applications weren't proper in light of the fact that they had original signatures on them?
No. No. We made a determination they were, they were not proper because they were improperly introduced to our office.
By, as, and when you say being improperly introduced into your office, you mean because of the fact that they came in envelopes that had the same handwriting on them?
We, no. No, it goes back farther than that. There is a combination of situations here, wherein they were initially brought in by hand, and then they were closed as something else and sent back to us, rather than following the instructions that would have made them whole.
And what would have made them whole is that the individual applicant would have filled out the envelope themselves and mailed it in?
That would have assisted in making them whole because at that particular point, it would be incumbent upon us, and we would not have questioned the fact that these individuals, even if the application, I mean, the envelopes had been signed by several different people, we would have assumed, possibly wrongly, that at least the individuals got them back and possibly mailed them in to us and are requesting absentee ballot other than what we found to be the case in retrospect that justifies, uh, our suspicion.
Mr. McCoy, what about the individual voter or elector themselves? Were they ever contacted by your office?
We, we had, we found no obligation to contact.
So you all, basically in your all's office, made the determination that that was suspicious? You made the determination that there was suspicion, and based on that determination, you decided not to accept the application without making any attempt whatsoever to get in touch with the person whose signature appeared on the application to determine if in fact that was their signature?
Again--
Mr. McCoy--
Yes. And again, the reason for that is the signature is moot. We are in, or are presently involved in an investigation. All of these people, all of these people, twenty, all twenty-nine of them, will be lo, uh, note, notified with respect to their, to the rejection of their ballots and why. And there will be additional investigations going on. We have found illegalities all over the place. All of these people will be notified. We do not have an investigative staff to do things on the spur of the moment, and we must make spur-of-the-moment decisions.
So you are saying that this was a spur-of-the-moment decision?
It had to be.
Mr. McCoy, was it also a spur-of-the-moment decision to turn these applications over to an individual whose name did not appear on the application?
No.
And what property right did this individual assert that required you to turn the applications over to that individual rather than to mail them to the person whose address has appeared on them?
Because we had no obligation to act. They were not ours to act on. If he wanted them, they could have gone to the garbage man.
Anybody, a third party could have come in and gotten them.
No. We would not have given them up to anybody.
Well, what, I'm trying to figure out what, how do you establish the criteria to determine who you're going to deliver them to and who you don't deliver them to? determine who you're going to deliver them to and who you don't deliver them to?
The individual that came and asked for those applications identified himself and gave sufficient information for us to know that he was probably the one that brought them in there.
So if I may be allowed, what you in essence maintain to this board, to the council, is that the fact that they were delivered by hand coupled with the fact that you subsequently received them in the mail, and that when the envelopes, that the envelopes, uh, that they were sent in the mail by all had the same sign, had the same handwriting, that you determined at that point not to accept the applications?
Along with-
Hold it, Joe, hold it. I want to be open and fair, but that question been asked about all the time, and answer.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure that we just kind of move on. I mean, I don't want to cut you off.
I understand.
But at the same time, I don't want to ask, have the same question propelled on and responding to, you know, 10, 15 different times. We just need to move on, on that issue.
Okay. Uh, is it possible to get an answer this, this particular point, or do you want me to settle for the answers that-
Well, I just put you on notice. Go ahead and let him respond, but after that, let's kind of pick it up and move on.
Do you recall the question, Mr. McCoy?
Do you restate the question?
The question, Mr. McCoy, is this, that what you're telling the council is that the fact that they were hand-delivered, the fact that they, you subsequently turned them over to an individual and subsequently they received them in the mail, uh, and that the envelopes that they were sent in were apparently signed, as based on your opinion, uh, filled out by the same individual, that the subs, this caused these applications, in your opinion, to be improperly submitted?
That's right.
And you made this determination based on not having consulted with anyone other than yourself or people in your office?
Okay, I'm gonna rule that out, Walter, and we gonna move on. That been answered all the time. Now, what is next question?
I have no further questions, Mr. McCoy.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, for the record, I'd just like to notify you that, uh, yesterday I had indicated that I would not be here at 1:00 today. It would be sometime after 2:00, which I did arrive at sometime after 2:00 today, and I heard, uh, most of the, uh, testimony that was given prior to, uh, to, uh, Mr. Grigsby's concluding, uh, statements, and I did, in fact, hear his concluding statements.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, Mr. Grigsby, have your hand up. Okay, we'll get back to you. Kelvin? Okay, uh, Mr., uh, uh, no, no. Uh, Mr. Ross has indicated to me that they are proceeding on a protest and is so noted for the record, uh, on the notice requirement. I wanted to make sure that was in the record. Okay, uh, Mr. Grigsby, come forward.
Mr. McCoy, without regard for the issue of hand delivery, isn't it a fact that you did receive 29 applications for absentee ballots between the dates of February 26th and February 29th, 1987?
We received, yes, we, uh, I guess the answer to that is no, to the extent that we received those application forms, not applications for absentee ballot during that period of time.
Is what you received the documents that are, that have been admitted into Ezra's?
Yes.
Are those the forms that an individual uses to apply for an absentee ballot?
They are.
All right. Now, isn't it a fact that those documents were stamped upon receipt in your office?
That's right.
Did you make any note, isn't it a fact that you did not make any notation on any of those documents indicating that the voter was eligible to receive an absentee ballot?
That is right. There is no need to indicate that one is eligible or ineligible if the form is not proper.
My question is, on that form, did you indicate, and, and your answer to that was no?
Right.
Did you make any, isn't it a fact that you did not make any notation on those documents that the voter was ineligible to receive an absentee ballot?
That's right.
Pardon me?
That's correct.
Isn't it also a fact, Mr. McCoy, that you did not notify any of the 29 individuals whose names appear on those documents as the requestors of the absentee ballots, that you had determined them to be ineligible?
That is true to this date. However, they will be notified.
That's, my question is, has it occurred?
It has not occurred.
Now, uh, I'm gonna hand you what is a copy of the Georgia Municipal Election Code. I assume you have one. Is that one there beside you?
No.
I've got a two-part question, and I want you to take as much time as is required to look through the, the index or whatever else you need in order to answer this. My question is, are you aware of any statute in that code that specifies who may address the envelope containing the request for an absentee ballot?
No.
Are you aware, Mr. McCoy, of any statute that regulates what post office those can be mailed from?
No.
Finally, Mr. McCoy, have you ever had any training in the specialized field of handwriting analysis?
No.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions by interested party to be propounded? Yes, sir. Please state your name, and if you represent yourself or an interested party.
I'm Johnny Edwards, Mr. President.
I can't, what did he say?
Johnny Edwards.
Okay.
Representing Johnny Shlue, Sr.
Okay.
And I only have a couple of questions here, I believe. Um-
You are his lawyer?
That's right.
Okay.
Mr. McCoy, you've been hit with a series of questions. Uh, let me ask you this. Did you do anything improper in relation to these applications?
And if any of the registrars? No.
And if, okay, very good. I believe you've also stated that, um, that you're not required to, uh, process any of the applications if they've been improperly submitted to you. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, you've been hit with a series of questions. Is there anything else that, uh, you did not have the opportunity to say, uh, during your series of questions here that you would like to say now to clear up some things to the council?
There are a number of things I would like to say.
Okay, could you go ahead and say those things, please?
I think that in this scenario, there is some misconception with respect to the public and maybe members of council, that we're dealing with an, with a situation here wherein there were some ballots either not counted or some potential ballots not counted. It ha, I have, uh, discussed with the Board of Registars and others of elections, of election expertise with regard to any irregularities or wrongdoing on the part of registrars, and I have received a negative answer. It is the registrar's call. But in addition to that, in addition to that, we are not talking about potential ballots here with respect to these absentee application forms. There are no ballots to go out on these forms. Consequently, if there are no ballots to go out and come back to be counted, then the whole question of whether or not some ballots that should have or should not have gone out to affect the outcome of the election is moot.
Okay, thank you very much. Wanted to make sure that the, uh, that the council understood that.
Okay, yes, sir.
My name is Lucius Mitchell. I was one of the candidates in the election. I just had one question for a point of clarification. Were some of the absentee ballots that you did count in the election, were they mailed by the same person and from the same mailbox?
Uh, we found that of the 47 applications that we accepted on their face, although there was some question with respect to those absentee ballot applications, because apparently all of those were mailed in over the same handwriting. At least we received them under suspicion, but not enough suspicion to negate, uh, and, and cause this, our office to contend that there is some gross irregularity here. These were all signed, they were properly mailed to the extent that we know, and we sent out these 47. Only 26 or 25 of those returned. There is some question in our minds as to why 47 people would ask for ballots and only 25 or 26 of them send them back. But at least, we sent those out because we felt that even though there is some suspicion, we won't try to, to negate these because of the way that we received them.
But they were similar in-
They, they were all very similar. All of those handwritings, uh, to the extent that we can determine, were all sent in by the same person.
And they were counted?
They were counted.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Clinton, Moses.
Mr. McCoy, I'd like to ask you a question, because this is beginning to be like a play, and if you don't ask, you don't know. Say, since I was working in a senior citizen nursing home, and I had seven senior citizens that wanted to vote, and I made out their application, and they signed it, and I addressed the envelopes, what would happen? All seven of those would come back?
We have experience along that line, Mr. Moses, and what our office, and not all these offices, uh, voter registration offices, are acting the same manner, all of which have some leeway, I guess, and they're legal in the manner in which they handle it. But our office will then determine upon receipt of, of your request for that absentee ballot, we will ask that you send in the names of those persons that you say want to receive absentee ballot. Upon the receipt of those names, we will check them out to see if they are registered voters, and we will mail applications individually to those persons, or I will, or one of the registrars will personally take those applications out and in, individually give those applications to the people, so they can fill them out and send them, and one person sitting at the desk can't do it.
Would you still have answered my question? I said, if I filled out the applications, that means I would have my handwriting on seven applications, I would have my handwriting on seven envelopes. Would you disqualify those? That's what I asked you.
We would disqualify them to the point that we could get a clarification. We would not process those application forms until such time as we made our initial investigation on them immediately, and that could be by phone.
Thank you very much. Uh, Kelvin, you asked me a question, Mr. Ross, you asked me a question, uh, I guess about 10 or 15 minutes ago, in terms of us proceeding on the first issue. Did you have any other questions or, uh, evidence you wanted to present, uh, in relation to the first issue? Yes, okay, come right ahead. Yes, uh, thank, wait a minute, I think he want to ask you some question. You need, Mr. McCoy? Okay, you can be excused, Joe. Yes, sir, Mr. Ross.
I'd like to call Grant Williams from Acorn to the stand.
Yes, sir, come forward, please. You said his name is Greg Wilborn?
Grant Williams.
Grant Williams?
Grant Williams.
Okay, please raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Okay. Mr. Ross, please bring out for the council who is a, Acorn. Okay.
Mr. Williams, would you, uh, state your full name for the record?
My name is Grant Stephen Williams.
And by whom are you employed?
I'm employed, employed by the Acorn Community Group.
Could you explain for the council what the Acorn Community Group is?
It's a community organization that works, um, in low-income neighborhoods on issues that are of concern to low, moderate-income peoples, such as getting vacant lots cleaned, abandoned houses fixed up for families, things of that nature.
And in your capacity as an employee of Acorn Group, have you had any involvement in the District III special election that's been held on March 3rd?
Our Acorn Political Action Committee did indeed endorse Ken Randall and worked for his campaign.
Who is Ken Randall?
He is a candidate that ran for the third district seat and also a member of our board.
Had you, have you, or did you deliver 29 absentee ballots to the Fulton County Registrar's office?
Yes, I did.
Could you explain the circumstances that led up to your delivery of those ballots? Or those applications, that's great.
In talking to our members, in canvassing the blocks, and in phone calling, we identified approximately 29 people who were either sick or too old to get to the polls and would, and wanted absentee ballots mailed to their homes. Myself and Mary Hickey visited those people with a copy of the absentee ballot form, and then got the information forth from them to fill it out and had them sign it. In some cases, they filled it out themselves, but generally, we filled it out for them.
Okay, and once you had gathered these 29 applications, what did you do with them next?
I then brought them down to the voter registration office by hand.
What day was that that you first delivered them?
I believe it was the Tuesday before the election. I'm not positive on that.
What was your first information after that as to the processing of these applications?
I left them with the woman there who said she didn't know if they were proper, but she would have Mr. McCoy call me, and I left my name and phone number.
Did you subsequently hear from Mr. McCoy?
Yes, I did.
And what was the contents of that conversation?
That it was not legal under Georgia law to bring them down by hand, and that was also not appropriate to bring on a copied application form.
And what did you do at that point after that conversation?
I then called the State Department, found out that indeed we had made a wrong mistake, that we should not have brought them down by hand, but that it was okay for ballots to be on copied forms.
What was your next action?
I then called Mr. McCoy and said that indeed he was right. I was mistaken in doing that, um, but that I thought we should still get those ballots back so we could mail them in.
And did you have occasion to go down to the Fulton County, um, election, the Director of Registration to pick up those ballots?
Mr. McCoy agreed to give them back. I went down and picked them up in one envelope.
But you remember what day you picked the ballots up on?
I believe it was Wednesday.
What did you do with the ballots once you had gotten them back in your possession?
When we got back to the office, we addressed them, put them in envelopes, and then mailed them back down.
And on what day do you recall addressing and mailing the applications back in?
I'm a little confused, but I think, I think we sent them out on Thursday.
Okay. Did you make some subsequent inquiry after they were mailed back in?
We called, we called our members on Saturday to see if they had gotten them in the mail. Uh, we did a, a rough sample, found out they hadn't. We called again on Monday. They hadn't got their ballots, so we called down to find out what was going on.
What did you learn from the telephone conversation?
We learned that Mr. McCoy wasn't in the office, but they, the ballots were, or the ballots were not being sent out, and that if we wanted to talk to Mr. McCoy, we'd call him back later on in the day.
Okay. Once you learned that the applications, uh, the ballots were not being sent out in response to the applications, what, did you give notice to the people who had submitted the applications?
Yes, we called, attempted to call all of them and, um, let them know that there was, uh, follow-up with their applications and that we would like to drive them to the polls if that was possible.
How many of the 29 people did you reach?
We reached 27 out of 29.
So 27 actually had noticed that their applications were not being processed?
That's right. We have found an obligation to these people.
And is it correct that at least 11 of those 29 people voted?
That's correct, as far as paper states.
And there are 18 people then who, to the best of our information, did not vote?
That's correct.
Have you had occasion in the last couple of days to circulate a petition to that group of 18 people?
Myself and Mary Hickey circulated the petition to the people we talked to.
And what was the nature of that petition?
The petition stated that they did apply for an absentee ballot, they did not receive an absentee ballot, and that they were notified that they, that they would not receive it, that they could vote anyway, and that they did not vote on their own free will.
May I?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I've just handed him a document, uh, due to the whole lateness of this. I've just gotten those today and have not had a chance to make copies, so I would need copies.
Okay, could the chair, please, see those?
Yes.
What are these purported to be, Mr. Ross? What are these purported to be, Mr. Ross?
This is a petition that Mr. Williams has circulated among the eighteen people who supposedly did not vote. Of the eighteen people who supposedly did not vote, how many signed that petition?
Fifteen.
And with leave of the President, I'd like to have him read the petition.
No, I'm having, Kevin, how you get around hearsay rules? How is he going to testify as to how eighteen people voted? I mean, is he their authorized agent? I mean, what testimony we have coming directly from the signatories on that particular petition?
There, there are several points on that matter. First of all, is that since we are governed in this procedure by the Rules of the Administrative Practice Act, the rules of evidence are relaxed, and pursuant to OCGA Section fifty dash thirteen dash fifteen, evidence may be received by this body if it is of a type commonly relied upon by reasonably prudent men in the conduct of their affairs, and I would submit to this counsel that petitions signed by electors are reasonably relied upon in many affairs of political life.
Have it been certified and notarized?
No, the petition's not certified and notarized. I would also add, though, that that underscores the whole problem because ideally, you would want to have issued subpoenas for the attendance of those twenty-nine people in time to have them here at trial, which we have not had adequate notice to do. But I think the council is entitled to receive this evidence under the relaxed rules of evidence that apply in this sort of a...
Well, I'm gonna let all of it in. I'll just, I'm gonna let everything in, I'm gonna let the council make that particular decision. So proceed.
Now... So fifteen of that eighteen signed the petition saying that they had the chance, they were notified that their applications were rejected, they had the opportunity to vote and chose not to do so.
That's correct.
So if those numbers are correct, that means that there are three people of that eighteen that did not sign the petition.
That's correct.
Do you know a woman by the name of Beatrice Hightower?
Yes, I do.
Would she be one of the three people who did not sign the petition?
She would be.
Did Miss Hightower vote in this election?
She claims she did.
And based upon her claim, have you reached the conclusion that her ballot was probably voided?
We could not find her name on the list of people who had voted. She's a member of organization. We have reason to believe that she did vote.
And of the two people who weren't notified, are you familiar with a woman named Nellie Ricks?
Yes, I am.
And did Miss Ricks vote?
Nellie Ricks did vote.
And what's your conclusion or basis for that conclusion?
She was on the list supplied to me of people that voted in the election.
Did you personally see the people who signed that petition witness it?
This petition here?
Right.
I saw about seven or eight of the people sign it.
Who gathered the other signatures?
Mary Hickey.
And Mary Hickey, is she affiliated with the group of Acorn?
She's also an organizer with Acorn.
Is it fair to say, Mr. Williams, that Acorn was working generally on behalf of Mr. Randall?
The Political Action Committee was working on behalf of Mr. Randall, Acorn Political Action.
That's all the questions I have at this time.
I just need to ask you one or two questions. Did you just testify that some number of the people who are at issue here were notified as to the rejection of their applications for absentee ballots?
That's correct.
Did you personally notify them?
I called them and Mary Hickey called them.
So between yourself and Mary Hickey, you have personal knowledge as to them being informed? I don't want to use the word notified because that carries particular legal significance.
They were informed.
Are you or Mary Hickey employees of the Office of the Fulton County, of the Fulton County Office of Voter Registration?
We are not.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions to be propounded? Yes.
I'm aware of that. After you had asked a question about the hearsay rule, I think prior to that time, I had asked if you could read the petition, and I don't think we ever got to the point where you actually read it. If that's permissible, I'd like him to read it.
Let him go ahead and read it. I want all of it there.
Would you read the petition?
The undersigned persons do hereby state that they reside in Atlanta City Council, District Three, that they are registered to vote, that they submitted an application for an absentee ballot to vote in the March 3rd, 1987 special election, to fill the vacancy in city council seat for District Three, that they were actually notified prior to March 3rd, 1987, that they would not receive an absentee ballot, that they had the opportunity to vote in the March 3rd, 1987 special election, and that they chose not to do so of their own free will and choice.
Are there additional questions to be propounded? Okay, thank you, young man. Is there, is there additional evidence to be presented on that particular issue by any party that is concerned? Fishman's there. Where's the petition? He just read the petition. Okay. We will need a copy of that. I think we got a Xerox machine. We're confused, but not that confused, Kevin. We'll get it back to you. We want the tendered evidence so the council can have that in making its deliberations. Are there any other witnesses on that particular issue? Okay. Now, the second issue that was articulated, Mr. Ross, is what? Okay. Well, before you, I think before you got it, we said we had two issues, we were going to proceed. Go ahead, Kevin.
Just for a point of clarification, when I said two issues, I understood the council earlier, particularly Mr. Guthman and his comments, to be saying that you needed to be looking at what Fulton County did with these applications for ballots. That's one factual issue. I see the second part of that issue in terms of the applicable legal standard to be how the voters responded and whether or not you'll be able to show, you know, that their election has had a doubt or cloud put over the results.
Okay, I appreciate it. We would now proceed with the issue of whether the names of candidate Goozby and disqualified candidate Gutley are confusing and similar, and Jonathan, I'll ask you to proceed forward on that.
Mr. President, as a part of my opening statement in this particular matter, I simply want to say that I represent candidate Nancy Goozby, whose name was immediately below two candidates who were disqualified, that the Georgia laws clear as to how the ballots are to be printed. Official Code of Georgia annotated Section twenty, Section twenty-one dash three dash two twenty-five states that ballots shall be printed in black ink upon clear white material of such size as will fit the ballot frame and in plain clear type so as to easily, so as to be easily readable by persons with normal vision. What we're saying is that by operation of this code section, what it is basically saying is that it...
No, I'm saying...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
By operation of this code section, what it's saying is that you should have black print on a white background. What we're saying is that, and we're prepared to tender a copy of the ballot that shows that in essence, the disqualified candidates actually had their names highlighted and wanted it to be a kind of red ink. We're also prepared to present testimony from two electors who basically maintained that not only was there confusion regarding this particular issue in terms of the highlighting, but there was also confusion as, as far as the actual voting machines themselves, in that both of the witnesses that we have basically maintain that in the process of putting the actual ballot into the machine and punching the number that appeared immediately next to candidate Nancy Goozby's name, upon taking the ballot...
Like to see the ballot, why you, go ahead.
Upon taking the ballot out of the machine, it actually turned out that the punch was next to number five rather than the candidate's number, which was six.
And you have witnesses to that effect?
Well, we have witnesses to that effect.
Let's, let's get it on.
First, I'd like to call Ms. Corliss Reese. Does she have to be sworn, Mr. President?
Yes. Yes, please state your name and spell it so the court reporter can get it into the record. Okay, would you please raise your right hand, please? You swear that the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you very much. Have your seat, and please talk in the microphone and loud enough so the council members can hear you, okay?
Ms. Reese, if you will, tell the council present at what priest, at what voting station you voted at?
I believe it's 3A Westlake Job Corps Center.
Now, you are particularly familiar with the candidate Nancy Goozby, are you not?
Yes, I am.
And what relation are you to the candidate?
Her daughter.
Okay, and you were particularly familiar with her number on the ballot, were you not?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and on the day that you went to vote, did you go in and receive a ballot and start the voting process?
Yes, I did.
And when you went to start the voting process, did in fact you see a card that had the red markings across two candidates' names immediately above your mother's name?
Yes, I did.
And if you will, tell the council if in fact this caused you any confusion?
Yes, it did, because once I punched, what I thought was, I was punching number six, and I removed the ballot from the machine, I noticed that number five was punched, so I then again inserted it and punched number six.
And when you took it out again, what was the effect of you having, having put it back in the machine and punched number six again?
I had two numbers punched, five and six.
Now, was there any difference in the way you inserted the card the first time as compared to the way you inserted it the second time?
No.
Okay, so in fact, you in essence had a card that had two punches on it, is that correct?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the term "overvote"?
Yes, I think so.
Or have you subsequently been made aware of the fact of what an overvote is?
Yes.
And are you aware of the fact that by your card having had the two punches on it, that it would not have been counted as a result of it having been an overvote?
Well, I thought about it, but I thought also that since number five was disqualified, they would know it was for number six.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Let me ask you a few questions. Young lady, what is your full name again?
Corliss Bivens Reese.
And what is your age?
Twenty-five.
And how far did you go in school, please?
I went to Marchuary College.
Went to Marchuary College, graduate of high school? What high school, please? Okay. On the day that you voted, were there red spots that appeared in position number four and number five? Did you see the word disqualified before those two names? Thank you very much.
I have no further questions of Ms. Reese at this time, Mr. ...
Anybody would like to put any questions to her, please? Okay, there being none, you can be, excuse, young lady. Mr. Thomas, please call your second witness.
Yes, I'd like to call Sheila Gray.
Please raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, please have your seat. State your name and talk directly into the microphone so we can hear you.
My name is Sheila Gray.
Ms. Gray, if you will, tell the council at what voting station you voted at?
English Avenue Head Start.
And Ms. Gray, did you also receive a ballot and prop, and put it into the voting machine?
Yes.
And what if anything...
English Avenue, did you vote at the, the one on Kennedy Street or the one on English Avenue?
On Kennedy Street.
On Kennedy, okay, go ahead.
And upon taking the ballot out of, out of the machine, what did you notice had occurred?
Well, I noticed that the number five was punched instead of six.
And what is subsequently did you do at that point?
I called the poll assistant over and told her that I punched number six, but number five appeared on my ballot.
And what if anything did the poll assistant do in helping you resolve this problem that you had?
Yes, she came and reinserted it for me, and when I punched second time, it came up number six.
Okay, and did she tell you what would be the effect of you having a ballot that actually had the two punches in it?
Yes.
What did she tell you?
She told me that it would not be counted.
And what if anything did she tell you you could do as a remedy to that particular situation?
No.
Now, you, you were familiar with Miss Nancy Goozby as a candidate?
Yes.
And is that why you picked up the ballot and particularly looked for number six being punched?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions of this witness, Mr. President.
Anyone I'd like to propose a question to this particular witness, please? Any of the interested parties? Thank you very much, young lady. You may be excused. Let me ask you a question, same question. How far did you go in school, please?
I graduated from high school.
Okay, what is your personal occupation?
Production engineer at Atlanta Journal-Constitution.
Okay, and the day that you picked up your ballot, did you notice the red ink mark on the ballot in positions number four and five?
Yes.
Did you see the word disqualified next to it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call as the next witness the candidate herself, Ms. Nancy Goozby.
Please come forward, Ms. Goozby. Please raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you very much. Have a seat, and please pull close to the mic so we can hear you, okay?
Ms. Goozby, if you will, state the voting station that you went to vote at?
3A Westlake Job Corps Center.
And were you also given a ballot and did you also go to the machine to put the ballot in the machine?
Right.
And what if any problems that you had regarding your ballot?
I had no problems. My son had problems in the next booth.
And what if any, there's been a copy of the ballot or a copy of the card that has been given into evidence before this council that showed a kind of highlighting across the names over yours? Were you, did you also see a ballot very similar to that or a card very similar to that that listed the names?
Right.
Did you inquire at the station as to why this was done so that you could see through the names of the people that were supposedly disqualified?
No, I came back to the campaign headquarters and I called Tom Malone's office. My call was not returned.
And what if anything that you do the night of the election to try to determine, based on your knowledge of the problems that your daughter had and your son had regarding attempting to vote for you, what if anything that you do the night of the election to try to deal with this issue?
Let me first state that it was not only them. I had senior citizens that were here on yesterday that could not be here today that would have testified to the fact that they did punch Gutler's name.
And what if anything that you do the night of the election to try to, to get this issue addressed?
The night of the election, nothing.
Did you ever attempt to see the, the ballots that were not counted as a result of overvotes?
Right.
And what if any results that you obtained as a result of attempting to see those?
I was told that I could not see those.
Did you make any effort to see the votes that were shown as blank votes?
I did.
And what was the response you got there?
I was told I could not see those.
I have no further questions of Ms. Goozby at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions to be propounded by any interested party that was enumerated when we started the meeting? Thank you very much. Thank you very much, you may be excused. Are there additional witnesses?
No, Mr. Chairman, not, not Ms. Goosby.
Okay.
Are we, do we go into closing at this point or...
Yes, um, there's no other evidence?
No other evidence regarding the aspects of the ballot.
Would any other party that was notified by, as advised by the clerk, would like to present any evidence in this particular matter whatsoever? Yes, sir?
No requests.
Yeah, we have them downstairs in the clerk's office, not before us. We can get it. You need those? Okay, we'll get a copy for you. Let's get a copy. We'll get a copy, Kevin. If there's no other issues to comment for the body, I will hear, yes, sir? Mr. Mitchell?
I'd just like to read the letter that I sent to the council for the record. Is that possible regarding this issue?
Yes.
It's addressed to Tom Malone. "Dear Mr. Malone, Events which have recently come to light in connection with the March 3, 1987, City Council District 3 election have undermined the integrity of the entire election. To focus directly on the point, the failure by Mr. Joseph McCoy to mail the absentee ballots to those individuals entitled to receive them could have materially affected the outcome of the election. Election results should be above and beyond reproach. Such is not the case in this election. Rarely does the city have the chance to set clear and decisive standards to keep the faith of its citizens in the fairness of governmental practices. The $16,000 figure cited in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution as the cost of a new election is a small price to pay to make such an election fair, honest, and believable, and most of all, not tainted. Further, some voters were unnecessarily confused into casting ballots, which did not count because the name of two disqualified candidates were highlighted instead of being deleted. Undoubtedly disattributed to the large number of spoiled ballots disallowed in the final count. The citizens of the 3rd District deserve the candidate of their choice to serve on the City Council, not a candidate elected by default. Let justice prevail for the people of Atlanta City Council District 3. A new election is warranted, justified, and appropriate under the circumstances."
Thank you very much. We received that, you can give it to the clerk and we'll take it. Okay. Now, Ed, I'm gonna let you speak, but we're not gonna start politicizing, we're gonna took the evidence, and I understand everybody's on stage, come ahead, but this is gonna be the last point. The president going to exercise his prerogative, okay? Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Ed R. Kemp. I was one of the candidates for City Council District 3 seat. To the council members, friends, and neighbors, and colleagues, I thank you for this opportunity to speak before you today. I think it is only fair to the candidates and voters of District 3 that a new election be held to fill the council's seat left by Mr. Howard. In view of the circumstances surrounding the election, the citizens deserve an opportunity to be made to feel confident, at ease, and trustful of the administrative handling of voters, of votes. That is, their votes casted will be given to the candidate they voted for. That a new election is in order to straighten out the inappropriate procedures, whether occurring on the county or other levels. A cloud has been cast over the integrity of the administering of election returns, and given one a feeling of suspicion, distrust, representing a crumbling decay of the election system. And if allowed to go without correction, a total collapse of city government is at stake. Another election would make good the mistakes and omissions and restore our district's election to a healthy state. A candidate spends his money to qualify, campaigning, and working hard on an election, abiding by rules and regulations, putting his heart and soul in what he is doing, just to have a discouraging experience forced upon him, is debasing and disheartening. If the city does not do something to rectify the mishandling of votes cast by citizens, then I will do something about it myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, come forward. Mr. Dingle?
I am Nathaniel Ingram. I am one of the candidates. My statement is very short. As you know, most of you know that I worked on the election and registration board for eight years. I'm mindful that just at the time I was leaving, there was a change in the setup. But during those eight years, they, no item ever came up where we did not seek advice from the county attorney or other election officials, even as far as Larry Dingle. We never made a judgment just on one person. So it puzzles me, after working with Mr. McCoy, that he would make this subjective assumption all by himself. So that is all I have to say, and of course that made for a bad election.
Thank you very much, Mr. John Lewis Senior.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. My, my statement shall also be very brief. As you know, I've been in four elections straight in a row. I've suffered financially, physically, and mentally, and I beg you with, with tears in my eyes, not to overturn this election. I think it's been fair, in my opinion, there are no irregularities. The solicitor have verified, to my understanding, that there were no irregularities, and I, at this point, I beg of you again to do not overturn this election. It's fair, in my opinion, I think we should go forward with it because we're not talking about spending another $16,000, we're talking about spending another $32,000. And ladies and gentlemen, I just cannot see no way that the evidence that has been presented here today is in a reason whatsoever, even at the minute part of it, that would give you any reason to overturn this election. I think it would be unfair, I think it's unfair to the voters of the 3rd District, we're heading into six months, that these people have gone with taxation without representation. And here again, in closing, I beg you, do not overturn this election.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me tell what we're going to do, what council members, everybody, let's get in place and we're going to move this car on. We're gonna vote, we've heard the evidence, we're gonna take the issues. I will enumerate the issues, we'll cast a vote, there's four issues, and we'll take them separately, one at a time. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. President, just a point of clarification. Mr. Lewis said that the solicitor had made a ruling. I'm not aware of any ruling that has come from the solicitor's office. I wanted to know from Mr. Dingle, who sent the applications over to the solicitor's office, if in fact he has heard from the solicitor's office and made a ruling on his inquiry.
Mr. Dingle, you heard the question, have you received? Stand in your place, you're already on hold.
Yes, sir, I am, I'm prepared to report on it.
Report on it, please. Yes, sir. Thought a country boy from Folk Valley could stand behind the bench.
Good point, Mr. President. Mr. President and members of the council, on March 18, 1987, the solicitor issued what is identified as an inter-office memorandum, which inter alia contains the following language: As the applications were neither delivered in person nor by mail, they could not be processed pursuant to the state election code. However, they were not then returned to the applicants by mail as required by official Code of Georgia annotated Section 21-3-283, subsection C, which is the code section which has been before the council all afternoon. In addition to that, Mr. President, hand-delivered to me at this meeting today, as well as to Mr. Dingle's clerk of the council, is a memorandum signed by James Webb dated today, which reads as follows: Subject: Twenty-nine rejected absentee ballot requests from the special election of the 3rd Council District, City of Atlanta, March 3, 1987.
Hold up one minute, our tape recorder just went off. I'm sorry, clerk said they got, my problem is the day I got so many balls, after this point here, I don't want to hear from nobody, the city attorney, the clerk, or nobody. They said the machine is on, because I'm getting upset, so y'all quit bothering me. And go ahead with your statement, and I don't want to hear from nobody else about any other issue. Go ahead.
Mr. President and members of the council, I believe that what candidate Lewis was referring to is that in the solicitor's recommendation contained in his inter-office memorandum of yesterday, it was stated, quote, "The office of the registrar be absolved of any allegations of criminal..."
I guess that's an objection, but go right ahead.
I quote, in the communication dated yesterday from the solicitor's office, it states as follows: "After finding that the applicants who submitted applications for absentee ballots were not notified by mail of their rejection as required by the subject code section, the solicitor in yesterday's finding indicated that the office of the registrar be absolved of any allegations of criminal wrongdoing." Mr. President, in today's memorandum, addressed to me as chairman of the Board of Registration and Election, and addressed to Mr. McCoy as chief registrar, and showing a carbon copy to Mr. Dingle as clerk of the council, which memorandum was hand-delivered to Mr. Dingle and to me today during the course of this hearing, it states as follows, over Mr. Webb's signature: "Please be advised that the inter-office memorandum issued to you, March 18, 1987, is an informational report only, based upon preliminary data received at the beginning of the investigation. This investigation is still ongoing, and its preliminary conclusions and recommendations may be subject to change upon issuance of the final report of this office, signed James L. Webb, Solicitor General Fulton County."
Okay, thank you very much. We receive that for information purposes. Yes, sir, Mr. Mo Fender, please.
Just like, asked a question for some information. Mr. Dingle, while giving testimony, was asked a question, and he spoke in terms of two things that confused me. One, he elaborated on there was a state election, and there is a city municipal election. I'd like to know which one supersedes under the hearings that we are listening to, but the hearings that we're listening to today, and again, that been brought out again, so I want to know which one, I understand...
State law, I can answer that for you. The city is a creature of the state.
Right.
And any law that is in conflict with, with state is null and void. And Mr. Dingle, you'd like to comment on that, please?
I will only state that as councilman Fender correctly stated, there are two sets of election laws, one for municipal elections and one for all other elections conducted in the state. And the state law specifies that it shall not apply to municipal elections. The state law specifies, and I can read that code section to you, and I referred to it earlier, the state law specifies, the state election code specifies that it does not apply to municipal elections. The municipal election code is the sole governing law for municipal elections.
No question.
Any further questions, Mr. President?
No, no, thank you very much. Let me tell you what the code section is, because we about to lose some people. It says, "Upon completion of the presentation of the petitioner's evidence as to why the election should be declared invalid, the clerk shall have an opportunity to present evidence as to why the election result should be ratified and accepted by the City Council." Mr. Dingle, move forward and let me place you on over. Mr. Clerk, will you raise your right hand, please? Swear that the testimony about to be given in this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, please state your name in your office, please.
I'm Larry Dingle, clerk of council for the City of Atlanta.
Okay, pursuant to code section, it just been read, section 1-3006. At this particular time, I would ask you to provide to council, if evidence as to why the election result should be ratified and accepted by the City Council.
With regard to this particular statute, I have no records, no evidence beyond what has already been introduced in the hearing today.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we're about to move, Madam Clerk, we're gonna do it on computer. Yes, sir, Mr. Guoffler?
I would move that we resume the regular order of business.
Then properly move there, second discussion, all in favor, vote aye, all opposed, vote no, the house has its own order. Now, the first issue is, is whether the name of the candidate Goosby, whether the names of the candidates Goosby and disqualified candidate Gutley are confusing similar, and whether or so such similarity is ground to void the election pursuant to OCGA Section 21-3-422. If you believe that the names were so confusing, you would vote yes. If you believe that it was not, you would vote no. Madam Clerk, take the vote. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to ask clerk of council a question in regard to this issue. If we tabulated the overvotes and the no votes to Mrs. Goosby's votes, would it make a difference in the election as it stands now?
I'm sorry, would you reset your question, please?
If you tabulated the overvotes and assumed that all of them were going to Ms. Goosby plus the no votes, would there be a difference in the election as far as combining her votes with the overvotes and the no votes?
If I were permitted to assume that each person casting a vote that resulted in an overvote tabulation, which were 151, 151, and if I were to assume that persons who cast votes that were no votes, and I don't remember that number, let me, 78, those two added together with Mrs. Goosby's 105 votes would produce a different result if that were permissible under the law?
Okay, let's take a vote.
The vote is now open.
On that first issue. Yes, sir, Mr.?
Would you state the question again?
The issue is, number one, is whether the name of Mr. Gutley, candidate who was disqualified and not properly removed from the petition, if so, protest failure is ground to void the election. I'm sorry, I had read the number two, let me get back. Number one issue is whether the name of Mr. Gutley, a candidate who was disqualified, was not properly removed from the petition, and if so, protest failure is grounds to void the election pursuant to OCGA Section 21-3-422.
Yes, I just, and I assumed that the reason for this was that there was not adequate time to reprint a ballot? Would that be...
I have to, I do not know, and I don't want to mislead you now, I have to assume that, that was the case.
I know the sample ballot you have up there that I just looked at, I don't see where there could be any question.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
May I ask the city attorney a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, procedurally, I guess since we have a reference statute in this question, and many of us don't know what the reference statute states, I would like to have the city attorney explain to us that statute and how we need to take action to be in compliance with answering that question according to statute.
Yesterday, you heard a lot of, you heard a lot about a code section that is number 21-3-420, and that section is the one that sets forth the declaring of the results and then the holding of the hearing. There's a companion section, number 422, that sets forth under the municipal election code... that sets forth under the municipal election code. You just heard Mr. Joyner indicate that there is a Georgia municipal election code. And so the sections you hear me referring to are under that code. I read from 21-3-422 of that... Did someone say they couldn't hear? Can't hear?
I have tried to, and Ma, I punched it, it just, I don't know what's wrong. You may move to one of those.
That's better? The relevant code section, Debbie, contains five grounds for contest. In my opinion, several of them are not at issue here. The notice itself has been written so as to summarize those grounds that were alleged in the various petitions. The grounds are five, they are listed. I could read them to you, and you can determine for yourself whether you would want the presiding officer to propound a question to you as to all of them and in what part. I might say, before I go on in that regard, that the general law gives some guidance as to the proper way to determine the merits of an election contest. And I read from the Treatise on Municipal Law, Quillan, section 12-12.29. It indicates that it has been held... It has been said that the courts must supply a two-step test in determining merits of an election contest. First, the court must determine whether there was fraud or irregularity at the election in question. And if so, secondly, whether it was so great and flagrant as to render the election results doubtful. That is the general law. It sets forth, in my opinion, a preferred process, and that is for you to have a two-pronged test. Our law is specific and controlling, and instead of using the word "flagrant" or whatever that said, it indicates that your standard is to determine whether, for example, under ground one, you find that there was misconduct, fraud, or irregularity. And if so, in your opinion, was it sufficient to change or place in doubt the result of the primary of the election? There are two other grounds that are set forth in that kind of two-pronged way. And in my opinion, it would be prefer, a preferable course for you to proceed in that way.
Mr. Campbell.
Given that opinion, Mr. President, might we vote on each of the questions, vote separately, on number one, whether or not there were irregularities? And then number two, whether or not the irregularities were sufficient to place in doubt the outcome of the election?
Yes.
So we would need to take two votes on each issue that is proposed, Mr. President?
Okay, let's vote.
I'm ready.
Huh?
I'm just gonna ask for my clarification. The yellow book that I'm looking across this room, the city attorney quoting from, what code?
Mars, I think I can address your question. I believe when people say "state law" and then they say "municipal law", that's misleading in a way, and I'm certain no one using that wants to mislead you. But both of these are state laws. There is a state law that applies to elections that are not municipal elections. And then there is a state law called the Georgia Municipal Election Code. They are both state laws, they're contained in books like this, they're part of a state code. Now, you have also heard reference here today from time to time about certain elements of our code, but they are not the controlling laws. We... There are some sections of that law that we passed in the city code to clarify and set forth with a little more particularity the kind of procedure you were gonna follow today, for example. But what I'm reading from is the municipal, Georgia Municipal Election Code. Earlier in this same book, there is a code, also in the state law. And I think we generally refer to it as the State Election Code.
Ma, that is a...
General, I'd have to find it, I'm not sure, but...
That is the paperback of that. Any lawyer can get a paperback of it, and she just got it for convenience purposes.
I'm asked to cast a vote. And if I'm unclear, then I have to abstain. I want to be certainly clear. I heard Mr. Joyner make a statement that stuck into my mind. And if I'm gonna listen to it, I want to be fair to all the people here. And that is, I'm gonna make my ruling on the basis of a municipal code. I assume adopted from the state code. If the state law, as he said to me, excluded that state provision from the city, and that supposedly, I'm thinking, that we have a municipal code. So I don't want to confuse the two.
Mr. Finley, let me try it this way. There are two laws in Georgia where you go to determine what are the controlling provisions in elections. When they are municipal laws, elections, you look to the Georgia Municipal Election Code, which is in the state law. When it is not a municipal election, you look to state law under code sections that are called the Georgia Election Code. They're both state laws.
Okay, let's take a vote. Whether or not there was fraud, we're gonna take two votes on each issue. Yep. And the first amendment, whether the name of Mr. Gutley, candidate who was disqualified, was not properly removed from the petition, and if so, whether search failure is grounds to void the election pursuant to OCGA, section 21-3-422. Let's take a vote, Madam Clerk.
The vote is now open. Has everyone voted? Vote is now closed. Three ayes, seven nays, three abstentions.
Okay. Okay. The second question is whether or not the error was sufficient as to change the difference. I mean, that was, the first one failed. But now we're on the second. I think the city attorney makes a good question. If it failed, in fact, we don't need to go to the second question.
If yes, you can...
Yeah. So you pass the second-pronged question, that's a good point. Thank you very much. But no, we don't have to go back to it. Number two is whether the names of candidates Goozby and disqualified candidate Gutley are confusingly similar, and whether or so such similarity is grounds to void the election pursuant to OCGA, section 21-3-422. Let's take a vote, Madam Clerk. Hold on. You ready?
The vote is now open. Has everyone voted? The vote is now closed. Three ayes, eight nays, two abstentions.
The motion fails, and again, we don't have to ask the second issue, okay? Number three, whether there was a number of overvoted ballots and no-voted ballots, and if so, whether search overvoted ballots and no-voted ballots constitute grounds to void the election pursuant to OCGA, section 21-3-422.
The vote is now open. Has everyone voted? The vote is now closed. Three ayes, eight nays, two abstentions.
Okay, it failed, we do not have to go to the second. Number four, whether the Fulton County Director of Voter Registration failed to perform certain duties imposed upon him by law with regard to handling of application for absentee ballots, and if so, whether search period, okay? Whether the Fulton, let me restate it, whether or not the Fulton County... Whether the Fulton County Director of Voter Registration failed to perform certain duties imposed upon him by law with regard to the handling of application for absentee ballots. Yes, ma'am.
Am I to assume that we will be voting on this and then the question of whether or not that affected the outcome?
Yes.
Thank you.
Bill Cameron, two-pronged test.
Mr. President, would you repeat that one more time? Because I'm a little bit confused about whether you're saying absentee ballots or applications for absentee ballots.
I'm saying application for absentee ballots.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's take a vote, Madam.
The vote is now open. Has everyone voted? The vote is now closed. Eight ayes, two nays, three abstentions.
I think it failed. I don't have a team, do we have a team, ma'am? It failed. Okay, in this particular instance, we got to go to... Said yes, and I carry that particular vote. Now we got to go to the second. If so, whether search failure to perform said duty constitute grounds to void the election pursuant to OCGA, section 21-3-422.
The vote is now open. Has everyone voted? The vote is now closed. Four ayes, seven nays, two abstentions.
No, and it passes, okay? That completes it. Yeah. That completes it.
Well, would you clarify that decision? Your statement of the vote?
The election stands as is.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Pitts have a paper to introduce. Mr. Finley has one, too, let's... Barbara. She gonna, okay.
An ordinance by Councilmember Pitts to read zone from RG3C, Residential General Sector 3, Conditional District, to C1 Community Business District, property located at 760 Glenwood Avenue, Southeast.
Zoning committee. Let it go to the zoning committee, and absent any objection, please, Mr... Yes, ma'am.
A resolution?